Basically, we could add the uh, control power thing.
Welcome everyone to the May 7, 2013 Shakopee City Council Meeting. We will start with item number one. Ms. Beckland, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Sherman?
Here.
Counselor Lehman?
Here.
Counselor Clay?
Here.
Counselor Whiting?
Here.
Mayor Tavkey?
Here. All stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening from staff?
Staff has no changes.
Anything from council? Counsel Whiting?
I'd like to see if we can move 9C1 and 9C3 to consent. There was one more for 9E1. And C...
Actually, you gotta approve the agenda first.
Right, let's do the agenda first, then we'll do work on consent. Do we have uh...
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second by Counsel Whiting. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. Now, consent business. Uh, we want to add 9C1 and 9C3 to consent?
Yes.
Is that a motion by...
9C1 and 9C...
9C3, I have questions about.
Okay.
Okay, so let's not put that one on consent. Um, anybody else?
How about 9C...
Is it 9C3 you have a question about?
Is it 9C3?
9CE1.
Oh, 9CE1.
And E1.
Nine, excuse me, 9E1. Huber Park Electrical Upgrade.
I'm good with that. Look at us getting so efficient up here. This is amazing. Anything else we can add to us, uh, consent? Counsel Lehman?
What was the first one that we added?
9C1, 9E1.
Mr. Mayor, I'm advised that the resident for 9C1 wanted to address you, but if it, it gets approved, my guess is that will be fine. It... If there's something that's changed, you may have to revisit it, but my guess is he'd be okay with it the way that it is.
Okay, well, I entered, we'll talk about that during discussion if it needs to be. Counsel Lehman?
Move the consent agenda, adding 9C1 and 9E1.
Wait a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Clay. Uh, Mr. McNeil, could you please read the consent agenda, adding 9C1 and 9E1, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, 4A1, adopt resolution number 7298, adopting the final plan of Dakota Crossing located north of County Road 16 and east of Foothill Trail. 4B1 approves a variance up to the existing fee schedule for Valley Fair, reducing the number of required fire inspections and the 2013 fee for fireworks displays at Valley Fair from $2,270 to $890. 4C1 adopts resolution number 7297, awarding a contract to Batuminas Roadways in the amount of $1,356,851.24 for the 2013 Batuminas Overlay, project number 2013-2, and approving a 5% contingency. 4C2 adopts resolution number 7299, awarding a contract to Charred Tiling and Excavation in the amount of $2,532,781.55 for the 2013 Reconstruction Project 2013-1, also approving a 5% contingency. 4C3 approves a quote in the amount of $6,680 to Choice Electric for the County Road 17 Pedestrian Tunnel Lighting Project. 4C4 authorizes appropriate city officials to enter into an extension agreement with Boltland Mink Incorporated in the amount of $73,435 to provide design and engineering services for East Industrial Improvements Project Number 2013-4. 4F1 approves payment of bills and electronic transfers in the amount of $1,547,950.62. 4F2 approves amendments to the city council meetings of April 2nd, April 9th, and April 16, 2013. 4F3 approves the application and grants a massage therapy business license to Vogue Day Asian Massage LLC, 1240 East Third Avenue, Suite 104, and approves the applications of and grants massage therapist licenses to Jiat Lee and to Ying Lee. 4F4 authorizes a closure of Lewis Street from First to Third Avenues on alternating Friday nights from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., beginning May 31st, ending August 23rd, 2013, for the downtown classic car cruise. 4F5 authorizes contract amendment number one to provide additional compensation in the amount of $8,400 to Footh Engineering and Environment LLC for consulting services relating to the garbage recycling RFP. 9C1 was added to consent agenda, and that provides for the consideration of a drainage solution for Valley Creek Crossing Block Three. And also a debt, addendum as a consent item is 9E1, and that provides for Huber Park Electrical Upgrade and authorizing Reese Electric to perform said upgrade.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion from council members?
Mentioned there was a question.
Yeah, I was gonna ask. Anybody from the audience need to speak about the items on consent agenda? Specifically 9C1, I believe that was the one? The drainage solution for Valley Creek?
He was going to be arriving later, so that might be...
Ah, alright. Well, we will address that if it's necessary in the future. Um, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Now we move on. Item number five, recognition of involved citizens by city council. Is there anyone, um, who would like to speak on an, about an item that is not on the agenda this evening? Sir, please sign in.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, my name is Jordan Olson. I live at 249 Mountain Street. And, um, I'd like to, um, ask this, uh, ask of this council today to, for the next year, really be considerate of your budget. We have a lot of expensive things coming up and, um, with taxes going up across the county and especially across the state, um, I think it's very important that we not continue to raise them here at the local level. Our, our citizens, um, are pretty much overtaxed, in my opinion, as, as, uh, as it is. And I would like to, uh, just basically ask you to be quite considerate and careful of your budget when Minnesota has a $754 million budget coming through from our governor. And I'd also like to thank the city of Shakopee for welcoming him, and, uh, I'd like to thank all of Scott counties, particularly Mike Beard, Eric Pratt, um, Representative Tony Albright, for their courageous statements. And, uh, that's, that's pretty much what I'd like to s- to say to you today.
Thank you, sir.
Be careful with your budget.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Sean Nelson at, uh, 603 East Eighth Avenue in Shakopee, and I'd just like to say that I disagree with the governor's comments about, uh, us being a rude group or a rude town. I don't think Shakopee's like that, and I think a lot of the comments that he made, um, earlier this week were, uh, a little out of line, and I don't think a lot of our people like that. That being said, I don't think, um, someone should talk while someone else is talking, so I do see that, but, um, just like to reiterate that, um, I think his comments were unfair, and I don't think I'm the only person who feels that way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes.
Hello, he's gonna speak and I'm gonna interpret.
Thank you. Everybody needs to be introduced and sign in, please.
Buenas tardes a todos.
Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Martín Álvarez.
My name is Martín Álvarez.
Yo soy residente de aquí de Shakopee.
I'm a resident here in Shakopee.
Y me gustaría tocar tres puntos que de verdad que este nos están afectando aquí en nuestra comunidad.
And I would like to see addressed three points that I see impacting our community.
Uh, el primer punto quisiera ver hacerlo notorio acerca de donde vivimos nosotros es que hay verdad en los departamentos, hay muchos este animales.
I'd like to, uh, the first point would be where we live in the apartments, there's a lot of infestations or animal.
Verdad, por la falta de verdad de los dueños de los departamentos, atención vea acerca de estas plagas que, que tenemos nosotros.
For lack of caring on behalf of the owners or managers that have these plagues of where we're living.
Por ejemplo, uh, yo soy una persona que tengo tres años hablando con el dueño acerca de, de este problema y, y hasta la fecha no, no hemos tenido ningún resultado positivo.
I have been trying to deal or speak to the owner or the manager for three years, and we haven't been able to reach agreements.
El segundo punto que me gustaría también tocar, verdad, hacerlo de, uh, hace unas dos semanas atrás.
The second point is what happened a couple weeks ago.
Uh, tuvimos verdad ahí en la comunidad donde yo vivo, este va, uh, mataron a un joven.
The community where I live, there was a gentleman that was shot.
Y este suceso se repitió hace dos años.
And this, this event happened or was repeated before two years ago.
Entonces, verdad, esto es algo que nosotros estamos, nosotros vivimos enfrente de esos departamentos.
This is something that we're concerned about. We live across the street from this building.
Y lo más sorprendente para nosotros es que atrás de donde vivimos nosotros está también la policía.
What is surprising to us is right behind where we live, the Shakopee Police Department is there.
Entonces este caso se volvió a suscitar, verdad, hace, hace dos semanas más, verdad, que uno de nuestros jóvenes hispanos, verdad, este, lo mataron.
And we see this case happening again two weeks ago where one of our youth or our young children was killed.
Y el tercer punto que me gustaría también tomar en cuenta, verdad, acerca de, de, del alumbrado.
And the third point would be the lighting.
Verdad, que veo que muchos de los departamentos de donde yo vivo y el área, en las noches, este, apagan las luces de los parqueaderos.
I can see that, I see that where, um, a lot of the parking lots where I live, the lights are shut off at night.
Y vemos, verdad, que este, esto es casi en la mayor parte de los departamentos, y, y verdad, que la, la falta de alumbrado aún en las calles a veces.
This happens in a lot of the parking lots of the apartments and on the streets too.
Entonces, a veces para salir para nosotros es a veces un poco complicado porque la falta de alumbramiento, verdad, es algo, pues, lo tomamos como algo peligroso, verdad, para caminar en la noche.
So for us to be walking in the streets, we see it not only as complicated, but it's dangerous because it's very, it's not light, there's not enough light for us to walk in the night.
Y esos son los tres puntos que quería tocar con ustedes, verdad, y, uh, yo represento mi, el pueblo hispano.
And those are the three points that I would like to talk to you about representing the Hispanic community.
Y gracias por escucharme.
And thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Counsel Lehman?
Ma'am? No, she's here, my friend. And I guess my question for him is, has he contacted the county or the state on the health-related matters?
Uh, no, no ha hablado excepto con los dueños de los departamentos.
What I've, I haven't because I have tried to speak to the owners of the buildings.
Okay, alright.
Counsel Clay?
Thank you, Mr. Álvarez. No, stay here. Please, please stay here. Thank you for, for coming down tonight. Um, so, I'm, if I understand correctly, you do not live in the apartment buildings where these two murders have taken place over the last couple of years, but close by?
Perdón?
Vivo cerca, sí.
That's correct.
En frente.
He lives across the street. Or in front.
Okay, and, and you had talked about, um, the apartment having an infestation? Could, could you be more specific?
Sí, lo que, lo que pasa es que, uh, yo creo que ha faltado la falta de fumigación en, en, en ambos lados. La gente que se, que se muda, verdad, yo creo que ha faltado un poquito de atención de los dueños.
I feel that there has been a lack of fumigation on both sides, as, as much as the people that move in and as much as the owners. Um, I'm gonna answer that if you allow me to.
Absolutely.
Cause we, we see that there's bedbugs, there's lice, there's cockroaches, and when it is brought up to the owners or managers, nothing's really being done about it. So he wants to come to the city and representing, asking, what is there, what else can we do? So we haven't addressed, um, health because we wanted to talk to the city first.
My, my other question was, um, he mentioned that, or inferred that he was representing the Hispanic community. Is, is there a official group that is meeting that you represent? Or are, are you just generally kind of speaking for friends and neighbors?
Es, es un grupo que estamos formando.
There is a group that we formed.
It, what's it called?
It's called CPHS, and what that stands for, it's, it's in Spanish, so it's the Hispanic Advisory of Shakopee Parents, or Council Committee, Shakopee Parents.
Mayor, if I, I might just kind of keep going here for a little bit. What, what other kind of issues is your group, uh, involved in?
Bueno, de los que estamos ahorita trabajando, es que estamos reuniendo a líderes como ejemplo pastores.
We're also meeting, one of the things we're dealing with is we're getting together with the leaders, which are mostly our pastors.
Y en ese liderazgo estamos hablando acerca de verdad, de lo que estamos batallando nosotros con nuestros jóvenes.
We're talking about what we see with our youth.
Con alcohol y droga.
With the alcohol and the drugs.
Entonces, este estamos trabajando para atraer programas, verdad, este, formar un programa, verdad, donde nosotros estamos pidiendo ayuda, verdad, con gentes líderes, verdad, que nos puedan ayudar acerca de estos casos.
Our goal is to structure a program where we can talk to the leaders and that we can seek for help. Also, we deal with education, with our graduation rate. We talk with, about our crime. Not everybody's a gang member, and how do we beat that? How do we, how are we a little more proactive and to the community? Cause we are here and we want to make it a healthy place for all of us to live in.
Alcohol and drugs are an issue for every community, not just the Hispanic one, and I'm, I'm glad you're helping to address that. We have, Mayor, over the last couple of years, who have talked on and off about forming or establishing a, uh, a rental housing commission? And that rental housing commission would, I believe, be a, a really good starting point to address some of these specific issues that you brought up tonight. Um, of course, the, the problem is that when to establish that, it needs to be funded. You know, we just can't wave our hand and, and say we're starting a commission. We're gonna have to hire somebody to, to do that work and to, you know, get things organized. And then we're probably talking at least one, if not two or more full-time positions to do that. But with, uh, the infestation you talk about, which I, I under, have heard about prior to this, as, as it being a problem in that particular apartment building. And of course, the fact that over the course of two years, we've had two people murdered there, um, is, is a very great concern for the council. We, we are going to be working on our, our budget coming up in, in another month or so, um, for spending next year. And I'm sure that, uh, this, uh, Rental Housing Commission is gonna be a part of, of that budget discussion. And I, I suspect that your group, since it sounds like it is a fairly formalized group of people, um, that you might be able to, um, give us some important feedback and information as we, we go through that budget discussion this summer to, to help us, help you, and the rest of the community find ways to address these problems.
Okay.
And as well, along with that, we will be, um, at our June 4th, our first meeting in June, um, we will begin to have our preliminary discussions about rental housing licensing in Shakopee as to what, um, council wants, what direction we want to go, and how we make that work for the community, for safe, healthy communities. So that will be, uh, on our June 4th, uh, agenda.
Okay.
So is that something, I'm sorry, so on June 4th, you meet here again, or?
It will be the...
How would we get involved in helping?
Yeah, absolutely. It'll be the beginnings of discussion as to how, um, we as council want to move forward with, um, rental housing, whether that's licensing, whether it's registration, what that looks like from a council's perspective and what we can fund. Um, and so we'll begin that discussion on June 4th, um, for implementation, um, if and when we decide where to go with it. So it will be, that conversation will begin on June 4th.
Okay, entonces dígale que estamos nosotros de la mejor manera, verdad, de para trabajar con ustedes.
We want to work together. We want to do our best effort.
Y hacer fuerte nuestra comunidad.
And to make a strong community.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Hold on just a second. Counsel Whiting, I think has a question as well.
I don't want to reiterate what everybody said. I just want to thank you for stepping up and being a part of our community and, uh, being a strong supporter of, uh, some of the things that we're already talking about. And like you to be a part of that.
Gracias.
Thank you. Counsel Lehman?
Does, uh, and I don't know who could answer this from staff or maybe the chief, but are there options available today for these folks to take either by the county or the, or the state? I don't want to reinvent the wheel and, and have two entities of government spending money on the same process.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, one of the reasons I was standing up is we do have some resources to deal with some of the bug issues that have popped up from time to time. So I would like your contact information. We can put you in contact with the proper resources after, uh, this. And again, uh, as the mayor said, we are anticipating, uh, a, on June 4th, bringing forward, talking about rental housing and giving you some different looks. There are no two cities that have, that I've seen that have identical rental housing ordinances. So in terms of the county and, and the city, everybody's, has a little bit different threshold of what they want to see in, in that ordinance.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I appreciate you being here. Anyone else have items they'd like to discuss? Alright, seeing none, we're gonna move, uh, to item number six, public hearing. Entertainer motion to open public hearing. Counsel Sherman?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
We have a second? Second by Counsel Lehman. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. Item number six, A, business incentives for Compass Data Centers. Mr. McNeil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is the second public hearing which you've held for Compass Data Centers. This relates to the construction of a data center, um, in the Dean Lakes commercial area of Shakopee. On April 9th, you held a public hearing to consider tax abatement, property tax abatement. At that meeting, as a result of the public hearing, you subsequently authorized a 50% tax abatement because there's an additional business incentive, that being the offering of SAC credits, sewer availability charges. There needs to be a separate public hearing for that, and that's reserved for this particular hearing tonight. The use of SAC credits is pretty straightforward. Previously, as a city council, you have authorized, uh, reserving up to 400 SAC credits to be used for economic development incentive purposes. The 400 came from what was 1,100s of SAC credits, which were returned to the city by the Metropolitan Waste Control, by the Metropolitan Council, when RAR Malting went offline a number of years ago. So we're keeping track of those in the sewer fund, and we've only used a few of those to date. Um, given the current value of $2,435 per SAC credit, if all 50 of these were utilized by, uh, Compass, that would amount to $121,750. We'd be very surprised, however, if they would utilize all of those, whatever they don't use, would come back to the city. One of the things, again, that's what the public hearing is for tonight. One of the things, however, that's tied to economic incentives for Compass came about as a result of news which Compass learned last week, and that I relayed to you in that. They have now found that rather than having a three-year build-out for potentially multiple users for five pods, in this particular development, they have found that they're going to use a single user, and that would reduce that to four pods. So instead of 109,000 square feet, it'd be 89,000 square feet. That would be built out or, over a more, uh, a shorter, a period of time, up to two years. So that's the advantage on that. The disadvantage is that it's going to be slightly less in terms of valuation. The other thing that's more important is that instead of the forty jobs, which had been considered previously, uh, we had been advised earlier that it was going to be in the fifteen to eighteen job range. I'm advised tonight that they are pretty confident that it will be eighteen jobs of that. The average rate of pay will continue at sixty-eight thousand dollars, that's still well above your, uh, otherwise only wage criteria, which is two hundred percent of federal minimum wage, or fourteen dollars fifty cents per hour. So, that's the discussion before you tonight. Again, at what point is economic incentives? Are they justified for eighteen jobs? My recommendation is that you have the EDAC continue to look at that sort of thing, but you need to make a decision tonight in terms of where this is going. Earlier today, there had been a public hearing which had been scheduled by the county, they canceled that upon the news. They look to you as a city to, uh, set the standard in terms of what they're going to do as far as abatement. So, depending on what you do, that may or may not come back, uh, to the county. What we have in your packet talks about, let's certainly, let's provide the SAC credits. At the time, we said, well, let's not do abatement. If you would consider, however, at least a partial on that, uh, to show that there's still interest on behalf of the city, one suggestion might be that rather than a fifty percent property tax abatement, that would perhaps be offered as a twenty-five percent property tax abatement. We haven't had Springstead run the numbers, but if you look at where they were before, about two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars and change over nine years, with reduced value and with twenty-five percent, that would be in the probably hundred and eight, hundred and ten thousand dollar range, again, over nine years. So, when you look at that, compare, uh, combined with, uh, a Minnesota investment fund grant, an infrastructure grant, and some sales tax abatement that the state is working with them on, we think it's a package that would be of some attraction to, uh, Compass to come here to Shakopee. So, uh, Mr. Ray Watson of Maximus, who is, uh, an economic development person that works, uh, with Compass, is one of, is a client, uh, for Compass, um, is here tonight if we have specific questions of the proposal, otherwise I stand for questions.
Thank you, sir. Council Lemon?
Mr. McNeil, if you could refresh my memory, but back in two thousand and three, I think it was, Dean Lake, that infrastructure was put in out there under a four twenty-nine deferred assessment policy with tax abatement.
There's a two-tier assessment on that, the, uh, retail area of that, uh, is paying the assessments for the County Road eighty-three improvements and the other infrastructure sorts of things. There's also an internal assessment that provided for some of the internal utilities and things such as that. The, uh, application that Compass had made originally was that those assessments be waived. Our recommendation, uh, is that that not be waived, and so, that's not being considered tonight.
Okay. And, and Mayor, if I follow up? The SAC credits are, uh, the hookup for the amount of users in the building to the Met Council system?
Correct.
Any other questions? Mr. Watson, do you have anything that you'd like to say?
First of all, thank you for having me here tonight. Um, we are still very excited about this project. Uh, it is actually, when, when we are able to announce the end user, you will be very excited about that. They are a Fortune five hundred company, uh, that is, uh, building a strong presence here, they have a strong presence nationally. And so, I think it will be a very positive thing for this community as well as this region, and so, we're excited about this and moving forward. Um, we are still waiting on, uh, all of the meetings here with Shakopee, as well as Scott County, to make our final determination, which we hope to have by the end of this month, so. With that, I'd take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Watson? Council Clay?
Mr. Watson, if you were to get no tax abatement, no SAC credits from us or anybody else, would you still come here?
It, it, that would be a decision the company will have to make, I will, I will tell you that it would make it, uh, the decision a little more difficult.
What's your next area of choice?
We, we have another location that we are working side by side with, uh, with Shakopee that's in northern Iowa.
It's in what?
I'm sorry, sir?
Northern Iowa?
Yes, sir.
Is that, is that part of the United States?
Yeah.
Well, Mr. McNeil informs me that he grew up up there, so I think so.
He also pointed out the restaurant that we ate at tonight was, uh, there was, uh, the Iowa flag was bigger than any of the other flags, so.
All right, then. Any other questions? There we go.
One more.
Yes, sir.
Try to be serious.
Good luck.
We, we, yeah. So, we were down currently to half, kind of a fifty percent tax abatement?
Yes, sir.
And there's been discussion about now making it twenty-five percent?
Yes, sir, um, the, um, the jobs, although, have gone, uh, from forty to eighteen, the, uh, building is only dropping by a fifth of its value.
Notice that.
So, um, the, the actual investment back to the community is actually higher than what it was before on the, on the ad valorem tax.
These SAC credits are, uh, based on employees, anticipated employees per building, so.
On usage? On usage.
Water usage, and I'm guessing there's not gonna be a tremendous amount of, there's no water usage as far as cooling of the-
No, sir, there's not. Um, we, we expect, um, the fifty was asked for, uh, just as a maximum number. The actual language that, uh, Mr. McNeil has put in, that is a usage of fifty, and then decreased and given back to the city, anything that is not used.
I'm, I'm trying to figure out how you could use or need more than two or three or four with eighteen or twenty employees. Or am I wrong in my calculations?
It's basically determined by the number of, uh, plumbing units that you have, toilets and sinks and that sort of thing. I think early on, there was some questions whether they're gonna be using water for cooling. They are not, and that's the reason that fifty can be scaled back quite a bit, but it's still, that will be determined when building permit comes in and they can look at the actual amount of plumbing needed.
This is just a wild idea that popped into my head, and I know you all shudder when that happens. We had talked about the cost of moving the, um, the, uh, fiber, fiber optic cable to an existing building.
Yes, sir.
Um, it, it sounded like that was relatively expensive, but I'm thinking there might be some existing vacant buildings in that general area that are in fairly close proximity to our, uh, park, water park, the old quarry, which is a spring-fed, s- small lake, which you could pump water from to use as cooling for your facility, because it-
The, the design on this facility is non-water cooled, so it, it would not require that anyway, um, and then on top of the-
It would, it would require changing your design.
Yes, yes, sir, it would dramatically change.
But it's, you know, I'm talking about relatively inexpensive free cold water.
Right, right. And, um, the, the design plan that we have laid out is, is a, uh, set pattern that we're utilizing in all of our projects, so it, it would be-
You're not interested in thinking outside the box, is that what you're saying?
I, I am very, I'm very good at thinking outside the box.
Well, you know, especially if you're from Iowa.
The company I work for does not, is not inter, interested in changing the design plan, so.
Well, that's a shame.
Yeah.
All right, so, Mr. McNeil, we have two items we need to discuss, uh, one, Resolution seventy-three hundred about the, um, uh, the SAC credits, and then how do we proceed with regard to the abatement? It's currently at fifty percent, do we just make a resol, uh?
Those are the policy issues, because you've had a worst case in terms of the abatement, you don't need to have another public hearing. We would like some direction on that, and that would be incorporated then into a development agreement, which would be brought back before you.
Okay.
The city attorney may have another-
Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, before you take any action, you should see if anybody else wants to speak, because this is a public hearing.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. Anything else for, uh, all right, um, anyone in the audience have anything they'd like to talk about with this, uh, project? Specific to this agenda item? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Council Lemon?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Second?
Speaker by Council Whiting, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Pass unanimously. All right, now, item number seventy-three, Resolution number seventy-three hundred, Resolution granting business subsidy to Compass Data Center. So, the SAC credits, um, is there, uh, a motion to offer or not offer SAC credits as to how we see fit for this project? Council Lemon?
Mayor, shouldn't we discuss whether we're interested in continuing tax abatement for this, this business? Because if we're not, then SAC credits probably aren't, aren't, shouldn't even be an issue.
We can do that, absolutely. Um, so currently, we're at fifty percent, staff has recommended twenty-five percent. Um, I feel that's a good way to go. What does everybody else think? Council Lemon?
Their justification is forty jobs and came out to fifty percent, and now roughly half that is twenty-five percent.
Correct. Council Clay?
Was discussed earlier, there was a dollar range of a hundred and eight thousand to a hundred and ten thousand over a nine-year period for the tax abatement. Was that at the fifty percent level or the twenty-five percent?
Twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five, it was two fifty something.
So, it'd be double that at the fifty percent level.
Two hundred fifty, that's the one we do have the number on, based on the old valuation. This will be a reduced valuation, we've not had Springstead run the numbers, but our best estimate would be in the hundred and eight.
At fifty percent, we're looking at two hundred thousand over nine years, ten thousand, twelve thousand a year. It's not gonna break our bank. In fact, it wouldn't even occur as a blip on our tax capacity. Citywide tax capacity, um, I, I don't know that it's, and, and the actual change in the size of the building that we get to collect property taxes from doesn't change that much.
Again, it goes from one hundred nine thousand square feet to eighty-nine thousand square feet.
Yeah, then ten percent difference, something like that. Um, I'm, I'm thinking that the fifty percent tax abatement might still be a viable option. I'm also thinking that with the very small number of, uh, employees on site, that the, uh, credits, uh, the SAC credits are probably not gonna be a very big issue for them at the end of the day. So, as a compromise, I'm thinking keep staying with the fifty percent abatement, but just skipping the other stuff.
Okay.
Which, you know, isn't gonna be a big factor for them anyway, from the sounds of it.
Mr. Whiting?
That's exactly, Mr. Mayor, that's exactly kind of the thought pattern I was working with, to leaving that fifty percent and passing on the, the SAC credits, saving them for more jobs.
Okay. Council Lemon?
I'm the opposite. I would rather see the abatement drop to twenty-five percent than, than the SAC credits are, their credits that were given, given back to us by the Met Council. It's not necessarily a tax dollar issue, it's a voucher, basically, that floated from the Met Council to the city that floats back out to somebody else. So, it's not really a, a financial impact on anybody, so I would be more apt to go with the twenty-five percent than a couple of SAC credits.
Okay, Council Sherman?
Um, actually, we should, think we should keep the package as is and do the fifty percent and do the SAC credits as well. And the reason that I say that is because there is an unknown factor here, and that is what other businesses this may attract. And I think we have to think bigger in terms of what this business coming here might do in terms of other businesses potentially wanting to come here. I mean, uh, Mr. Watson's like alluding to another event, another company, and we don't know who that is, and I know he can't disclose that, but it seems that if we look at the greater, um, kind of landscape of economic development and consider where we've made investments already, just looking at this as an additional investment to create a broader business base, um, than looking at it in a singular way.
Okay.
So, that's how I would view it.
Very good.
I do view it.
So, who has, uh, Mr. McNeil, do you need any clarification thus far, do you have any suggestions?
We, we've heard four opinions with three different options, so.
Right. It's whoever gets the motion first. Mr. Thompson?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, maybe I could help him, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but the council's already approved the fifty percent tax. So, if there's, and I know there's combinations here, but so far, other than Councilman Lemon, I, it, it would take a motion to change the fifty percent. So, if somebody wants to make a motion to at least address that one first, because if nothing passes, the fifty percent is still there.
Right.
So, you need an affirmative motion to change that.
Okay, Council Lemon?
But what we voted for under fifty percent was forty jobs.
No, and you can certainly change it, I'm just saying it would take a motion to change it.
So, that actual motion that passed at fifty percent is an inaccurate motion to what we're actually getting.
I, well-
The fifty percent was based on then coming up with a development agreement that everyone could live with. And so, it is based on forty jobs, which was represented at that time. Um, if you can give us some direction in terms of what you feel is an appropriate number of jobs as a minimum, uh, you can either choose to stay with the fifty percent, or as the, uh, attorney recommends or suggests, make a motion to something else.
Council Clay?
As one other item to consider also, as liaison to the Utilities Commission, I, I need to tell you that the utilities, they're very interested in this potential for a significant increase in their electrical sales, which goes to their general profitability and extends itself to a, a more favorable user fee for all citizens of the, of Shakopee. Um, you know, so there is a, it's not a jobs benefit, but it, there is a benefit to the city there that needs to be considered as well.
All right, so with regard to the abatement, does anyone have a motion or would like to make a motion? Currently, we're at fifty percent abatement for forty jobs is where we're at right now. Um, we don't need to change that right now, correct?
If you want it reflected differently in the development agreement, we need to get a consensus on that.
So, a, a fifty percent abatement with fifteen jobs?
With eighteen jobs.
Eighteen is the number you want to go with?
That's what I understand is, okay?
Okay, Council Clay?
Doesn't sound like anybody's jumping up to change that. So, maybe we should move on to the discussion about the tax credits.
Want to reiterate it at the eighteen jobs?
Yes, we need to, we need, yeah, we need a motion for eighteen jobs, if we're acceptable for fifty percent at eighteen jobs. Council Whiting?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make that motion to approve, uh, tax abatement at fifty percent with the realization that the jobs are fifteen to eighteen jobs. You want an eighteen?
Okay. What, eighteen?
If you say fifteen to eighteen, then that means the minimum would reflect fifteen jobs.
I'll, I'll go with the eighteen then.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Speaker by Council Clay? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Council Lemon passes four to one. Um, Council Lemon in dissent. All right, so now we have, uh, seventy-three hundred, the SAC credits, utilizing the SAC credits for, um, economic development. Um, we need a motion for this item as well. Council Sherman?
So, I'll make a motion offering Resolution number seventy-three hundred, a resolution granting business subsidy to Compass Data Centers LLC and any of its affiliates.
Do we have a second? Utilizing the SAC credits? Somebody's got a second, so we can discuss, come on.
All right, so I'll second it.
All right, second by Council Clay. Uh, discussion on the item, Council Sherman?
Okay, so I just sit here and consider how sad would it be that we haven't seen any development on this particular pad or discussion about any proposition in nine years, ten years since it was developed?
They wanted to put a church there.
And, um, and we're gonna let twenty-four hundred dollar value SAC credits potentially make or break a deal, um, when we are sitting here saying that they're probably gonna use a pretty small minimum of them.
Oh, she's beating this up with logic.
Just, uh, just trying to-
She's swaying me, I know.
Why'd you do the same thing?
All right, any other discussion?
What was the motion?
Uh-
To adopt Resolution?
Resolution.
Seventy-three hundred, up to-
Okay.
Yeah, adopt the resolution, up to fifty SAC credits, which we anticipate using probably no more than eight to ten.
There is wording in there that they're only gonna use as much as is needed.
Correct.
Correct. Well, with that, I guess I'm comfortable.
All right, any other discussion? Oh, he already was seconded, we were in discussion. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passes three to two with Councilors Layman and Wyding in dissent. All right. Thank you very much. Um, item number seven, uh, twenty-twelve annual financial report and audit presentation by KDV, Ms. Lenahan.
This is what I live for every day, every year, this is it. I, I understand that, Councilmember Clay, because this is riveting. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and viewing public. As we do each May, we're presenting to you the twenty-twelve annual audit and the twenty-twelve annual financial report. This is actually an item Mister Wishman and I were talking about, saying it could have been very interesting if we'd introduced this before your just recent council action. This is a very positive experience that we bring to you, it was an excellent audit, the results of the financial report are very positive. I'd like to introduce Mister Steve Wishman, Government Audit Partner with KDV, and I would like him to give you an overview in a time-sensitive way, as I realize this is a very heavy agenda you have this evening. But there's some very good information and some very interesting trends that I think you'll be interested in hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mister Mayor, members of council, it is a pleasure to be here tonight. I'm gonna pull up my PowerPoint presentation here real quick and, uh, walk through that.
And while you're doing that, I wanna thank staff and everyone for, uh, the new technology and, um, all the great things that we've got that will make, uh, meetings work much better and actually be able to have much better presentations, um, from the podium up there. So thank you all of, uh, staff and Chris for all the work you guys have done to get this and how it all integrates very well. Thank you.
How come they get two screens and we only get one?
They're amazing.
If I could borrow your gavel, I could put it up in front of my screen so it can mimic that post right there. I'm pretty used to it after all the years.
Exactly. You, you're missing a good, uh, twenty-five, thirty percent of what's been going on for a while, I don't know what we're gonna do with you at a hundred percent, Council Layman.
Is, is that why you've always been leaning towards me all these?
Yeah, you thought I liked you.
Yeah.
All right, I apologize, we digress.
That's great.
You are, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you so much, uh, again, it's a pleasure to be here tonight to walk you through the audit process. The end result of the audit are these three books, the comprehensive annual financial report, about a hundred and thirty-some pages, um, is the official audit document of the city. It is, it will be submitted to the Government Finance Officers Association for the Certificate of Excellence, we've received that the past number of years. Uh, we believe it complies again with that, it's a, it's a great document, lots of information in there. Uh, again, um, go through it as much as you can, if you read nothing else, I, I recommend you read about the first twenty pages, management discussion and analysis, kinda puts it in a summary form of the financial status of the city, kinda what changed in twenty-twelve, uh, and, uh, kinda some things to look forward to, uh, for future. Uh, in addition to that, uh, we do have a couple of our documents, one titled a communications letter. The PowerPoint that I have has all the graphs in that document. There's also some required communication where there's nothing out of the ordinary there, uh, to talk about. And then finally, we have some reports on government auditing standards and the Minnesota Legal Compliance Audit Guide. Couple of required, uh, reporting items with the standards that we have to follow and the compliance document that we have to test, and I'll briefly touch on that, uh, here in just a moment, so. Uh, to give you a synopsis of the audit process, the planning really starts, uh, late fall of twenty-twelve. We get ahold of, uh, the finance people and talk about what's happening with the city. Uh, we get the timing, uh, arrangements in for, uh, our first visit, which is shortly after year-end. And then we come back usually in, uh, about March time, uh, to go through most of the audit test work. Uh, a, as a result of that, we, uh, do have a, a statement that's generally ready, uh, early to mid-April with a draft of that comprehensive report. We go through it thoroughly with, with, uh, your management and the finance people. Then basically have the final reports here tonight and the board presentation. So that's all in about a six-month period of time, and I just would like to say that again, it was very, very smooth, the process. Uh, you have very competent people, and we had no audit adjustments that, uh, we, we posted in the financial statements. So what that means to you as a council is that the information you see every council meeting is accurate information. And with accurate information, you can make good decisions, uh, whether it be budget, you know, various projects, those types of things. And I think that's really important to note, that the information itself is, is very, very accurate, and that you can make, uh, your, your sound decisions that, that brings, keeps the, uh, city moving forward. The, uh, independent auditors' report, which is in the comprehensive report, starting on page nine, uh, is, uh, kind of our seal of approval, if you wanna say, on the audited financial statements. We again are issuing an unmodified or unqualified opinion, a clean opinion on the state, financial statements, that is the highest level of assurance that we issue. Congratulations again for receiving that. Takes about three pages to go through it, if you actually looked at last year's audit opinion, it does look a little bit different. There was some clarity standards that we were required to implement, breaks it out into some subsections that just talks about what your responsibility is as management of the city, what ours is as auditors, the various opinions on, on the various items in the comprehensive report that we provide the opinion on. So it does look a little bit different, but in substance, it is the same, uh, type of information. As I had mentioned also, we are required to test, uh, the Minnesota Legal Compliance. That is a guide that's, that's, uh, provided to us as private contracted auditors by the State Auditor, the Office of the State Auditor. It does provide, uh, us to test these various, um, compliance aspects, deposits and investments, uh, being one of the larger ones to make sure you're, you're investing in authorized investments, that you're adequately collateralized with your banks, uh, contracts and bidding, various, uh, public indebtedness, claims, disbursements, a variety of provisions. It's about an eighty-page document, and I'm pleased to report there were no findings as a result of our, uh, testing in that document. And that is, uh, that is excellent. Um, most of them, most cities will have maybe one, maybe two findings, uh, you did not have any findings. Uh, what that means to me is not only are you aware of the, the compliance, uh, provisions, but you also are good at communicating that to all of your staff in that, uh, you know, they're aware of the findings as well, 'cause it takes more than one person to be compliant with that inform, with the various compliance regulations.
Mister Mayor?
The, uh, government auditing standards?
Hold on just a second, Council Clay?
Sure.
Last year and the year before, we had some issues with compliance, or is that coming up later in the discussion?
Yeah, we do have a couple of things that we're reporting on, I don't know if they were related to legal compliance, but we do have a couple items that I'll be talking about next relating to, like segregation of accounting duties, is that the one item that, that you always hear about? Okay, exactly. Uh, that is in the communications letter, uh, some of the things that we are required to, uh, to talk about. The, uh, the SD stands for Significant Efficiency, the last, uh, three are just titled deficiencies. Um, again, uh, if there's anything material that would be severe, that is titled a material weakness, you do not have any of those reporting items. There is one that is less severe than that material weakness, but important enough to talk about tonight, and that is the la, lack of segregation of accounting duties. That is kind of a carryover from prior years, and an ideal, um, segregation of internal controls would make sure that every step of every process has more than one person reviewing and/or approving, uh, the various categories of, of the disbursements, payroll, cash receipting. Uh, there are some, some incompatibilities that are, it's actually listed on page three of the compliance, of the, uh, communications letter. Um, a lot of it is relating to payroll, you do have one person that does a majority of the payroll functions. Some of it in the, the cash receipting at City Hall, and then some, um, just cash disbursements processes. This is very inherent to, to all cities that we audit, we work with about sixty cities in the state. Um, we're not recommending you change anything other than to realize there are inherent limitations in an internal control system. Um, these, these three items that we have reported on, um, are again just inherent because of the cost-effectiveness of having more people involved in the process, really would not be, uh, cost-effective to, uh, to hire more people to, to segregate those further. Um, we look at it to see, to say, do you have mitigating or compensating controls so that, uh, things will be caught in the normal course of business? We do believe that, there are just some inherent overlaps that really, um, short of hiring more people, uh, you're not gonna get away from. And we're not recommending that you do that from a budgetary standpoint. Uh, there is only two audits that I do that do not get a segregation of accounting duties. One of them is the Minnesota State College and University System, who has hundreds of accountants doing various levels of detail. So that just kinda gives you maybe a flavor as to what it would take, what size of an organization where that, um, type of, uh, segregation would, would be eliminated. The other three things are the lowest level of reporting, there are more housekeeping items in general, but, uh, they are on, on page four of that communications letter. Um, a couple of things relating to receipting of internal, um, uh, in the ICE Arena and the Community Center. Again, both off-site type, um, operations, and there are just a couple of tweaks that we recommend that you evaluate, looking at, uh, the segregation of duties to receipt money, prepare reconciliations, prepare deposits, et cetera. Um, and those are fairly consistent between the ICE Arena and the Community Center. Uh, again, more information is on page four, um, if you would like to, uh, look at that further. The, uh, last, uh, item is, uh, the, um, approved fee schedule. Uh, we do, uh, we did an, an audit, um, a collection of fees, uh, we, we did a test, and of the ten that we tested, there were three instances where the fees charged were technically not in accordance with the approved fee schedule. Um, we evaluated that further and talked with, uh, with Julie and her team, and, uh, there were just some outdated calculations and information there of those. So that's just a recommendation to review and evaluate those fee schedules and make sure that the fees that you are charging are, are calculated in accordance with, uh, with the approved schedules, and actually they were, uh, most of those were, um, lower than, uh, the actual approved fee schedule that was, uh, in effect. So, um, again, just a recommendation to evaluate that and, uh, make sure that those are in compliance with, uh, with the schedules uh, that are, um, published and approved here by council.
Mister Wishman, we've got a question up here, Council Layman?
The, uh, lack of segregation, accounting duties and internal receipting controls. It's my understanding over the years that the, the dollar amount that we're talking about being dealt with, specifically at the ICE Arena and Community Center, are transactions, whether it's, uh, sharpening your skates or, or daily entrance fee, things like this, that dollar amount is so low per transaction that it's, it's really hard to justify adding a bunch of staff members to balance that out.
Uh, a very valid point, uh, and that is one reason why we have it as the lowest level, 'cause it is not significant to your overall financial reporting operations, and I, I certainly, uh, understand and would concur with the very small, uh, magnitude of those dollars. You know, it is just, again, something that we see as part of the process, it's something, um, that we note to you, and that is something you can determine, again, it's not cost-effective to, uh, to implement anything further, and that would be just fine. Correct? Okay. Financial analysis, uh, start with that next, uh, got a few slides here that just walks through that. And again, um, you know, the summary of it is, is that the, uh, the financial analysis, uh, the financial condition of the city is, is excellent. Uh, there's excellent trends, uh, and twenty-twelve continues those trends. Uh, over the five-year period, as you can see, uh, your revenues have grown, uh, from about, about just under sixteen million dollars to about twenty-one point seven million dollars, uh, for twenty-twelve, the revenues in the general fund, twenty-one million, seven seventy. Expenditures, eighteen million, six ninety-four, one oh one, that is twenty thousand dollars higher from last year, and again, um, actually lower than it was in twenty-ten. Uh, you've seen a very, very consistent, uh, expense budget for twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve. Um, as a result of the revenues growing, the expenses staying relatively consistent, you have seen a slight increase in your fund balance. Uh, this year's fund balance, uh, grew from nine million, three oh four, up to nine million, five twenty-two, so about a, a two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar, um, increase in fund balance. And again, uh, certainly, uh, we'll look at kind of a percentage-wise in just a second, but again, the trend, overall trend, is that the fund balance remains very consistent, um, your revenues have exceeded your expenditures in each year presented except for two thousand and eight, and your expenditure line item as a whole has remained very consistent over the last three years. As a result of that, you would expect that your revenues per capita would increase, and that is consistent with what we, what I just mentioned. Your expenditures, uh, per capita, again, stayed, uh, within a dollar, from four hundred and ninety-five dollars per capita to, uh, to four ninety-six. And the other thing I, I would look at is, is this a, you know, how does this compare to an average? Uh, this is a very reasonable amount and very much, uh, within the norm, uh, of an average city of your approximate size and demographics. Um, and again, so very, very consistent with what we would expect. Want to take a brief look at the budget to actual, uh, you had budgeted a total of nineteen million, two sixty-eight in revenues. It came in at twenty-one million, seven seventy, three forty-eight, uh, about a two-point-five-million-dollar positive variance. Most of that was in two categories, taxes and assessments, uh, due to the market value, credit elimination, uh, the EDA levy, and, uh, uh, and those types of, uh, transactions that, that, uh, caused that tax number to be over the budgeted amount. The charges for services, uh, a lot of that from the public utilities charge that's generated, that was an increase. As a result, that was over budget by nine-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, again, very, very con, uh, consistent on the other categories, up slightly or down slightly, but, uh, with, within reason from a budgeting perspective. The expenditure side, uh, which is obviously important as well, uh, you budgeted twenty million, one hundred and twenty thousand, came in at eighteen million, six ninety-four. So about a one-point-four-million-dollar under-budget amount, all categories presented were under budget. So it was a concerted effort to remain under your budgeted amounts in general government, public safety, public works, and the park and recreation. Variety of factors, um, some open positions, less supplies, some less instructors in the park and rec area, uh, and just a variety of, uh, of, of items there. As a result of the success of the general fund, you were able to transfer out two million, nine-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars, uh, to, uh, to other funds of the city to, to again reconcile that change in fund balance to the two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, which is exact, uh, very near what your budgeted, um, amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand, five thirty-nine. And again, those transfers out, uh, noted in the comprehensive report to a variety of other funds, uh, of the city. Uh, want to take, just, uh, we just picked one fund this year to kinda highlight as well, and this is not in your communications letter. Uh, transit fund, uh, which is one of your special revenue funds, it's kind of in the back of the, uh, comprehensive report. Uh, you're, you had budgeted about a million dollars of revenue, the actual came in at one million, one oh two. Um, your expenditures budgeted about one million, two fifty-one, came in at one million, two ninety-four. So this fund had budgeted a deficit of about two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, came in at an actual of a deficit of a hundred-and-ninety-two thousand, uh, ending fund balance at the end of the year about a million, forty-five thousand dollars. Again, at the, uh, and this, this fund has had a, a trend of having a deficit, if you wanna say, and a net change in fund balance. Uh, so you do have, uh, roughly five years left at the, the current rate of spending, if you wanna say, uh, before the fund balance would be, um, depleted in the transit fund. So again, just wanted to kinda point that out, it's kinda, kinda one of those things to watch from a trend perspective. And obviously, revenues, uh, generated, uh, are challenging from a transit fund perspective, we do work with like Southwest Transit, uh, so we're aware of kinda the intricacies of that as well. As I mentioned, I wanted to just comment on the fund balance as a percent of expenditures. Your city policy is to maintain a, a percentage of approximately forty to forty-five percent. The State Auditor's recommendation is around fifty percent, at the end of two thousand and twelve, that was at fifty-one percent. So fifty-one percent of your expenditures is in your fund balance, you could theoretically operate for six months without receiving another dollar, uh, in the general fund. Uh, and that is certainly a range that the, uh, the State Auditor would say fifty percent is a good level. Uh, you, your, your policy says at least forty-five percent, forty to forty-five percent, and you're at fifty-one percent, so. And that's been very consistent here from twenty-eleven to twenty-twelve. The high point in the last five years of sixty-seven percent, and in twenty-ten, the low point of forty-four. So right in the range of where you would like to, uh, maintain your general fund balance. As far as the revenues of the general fund, we talked about, uh, the, the growth in those, this just really shows kind of the categories, the, the tax number, uh, did grow this year, uh, from fourteen million, three hundred to fourteen million, seven eighty-six. Uh, the other significant changes, uh, charges for services, uh, if you look at that over the five-year period back in two thousand and eight, your charges for services were about a million, ninety-three thousand, uh, that's up to about four million dollars now. So that's been a very substantial change in your revenue structure, uh, for the general fund, just wanted to point that out as well. Keep in mind the tax and assessment number for the last three years, you do see the thirteen-point-five to fourteen-point-three to fourteen-point-seven, uh, 'cause when we look at a, a graph here in just a little bit, you're gonna see your actual, um, certified levies remain very consistent, so allocation-wise... So allocation-wise changes a little bit. Some of the market value replacements does have a factor in some of the numbers for two thousand twelve as well. And next graph, as I just mentioned, your taxable tax capacity is the larger bar. That again, showed a high in two thousand nine at about forty-one million. Looked at Eden Prairies just yesterday, that is a very, very consistent trend. The two thousand nine's the high point. Ten, eleven, twelve has seen a decrease. So you're down, your taxable tax capacity is about thirty-five point four million. Whereas your certified levy for the last three years has remained essentially the same and is actually down from your two thousand nine number. So done a nice job maintaining that certified levy at the level that, consistent level over that period. As a result of the tax capacity going down and the actual levy staying the same, the rate has actually increased, not a fault of yours at all. But again, just because of the pure math calculation of that. And I just wanted to point this out because the average statewide is about forty-six point two six percent. So you do see that you're about ten percentage points below average from even, even at this rate of thirty-six compared to the statewide average. So very favorable there as well.
Could you just say that again?
Sure.
No, I'm serious.
Yeah. Tax capacity rate, which is taking the net tax capacity, your certified levy into the net tax capacity, your levy has stayed the same. Even though the tax capacity has gone down, the rate has increased slightly because of that. But this thirty-six point six six percentage rate is below the statewide average of forty-six point two six percent. So your burden to your citizens would be lower on average.
By about ten percentage points.
Ten. Ten points.
Ten points. So the taxpayers of the city are enjoying a pretty low tax rate.
Burden, if you want to say, correct. The one caveat is-
Could we just say that three times?
Yeah. The one caveat is that when they see their bill, they obviously have the school portion and the county portion as well.
Yeah.
So it is a little harder to compare, but your portion of that has been very favorable over the last three years. So you should be congratulated for that. Again, just a couple more slides here, looking at general fund expenditures from a percentage standpoint. For every dollar you spend in the general fund, about fifty percent or fifty cents is related to public safety. That's consistent with prior years, just one percentage point. Again, all within a percentage point here. General government is about fifteen to seventeen percent. Your recreation, roughly twenty percent. Public work stays in that thirteen to fourteen range. So again, very consistent percentages, which is what we'd like to see from an audit standpoint as well. I want to shift gears and talk just real briefly about your enterprise funds. The sewer fund had a very nice increase in revenues, about eight-hundred-thousand dollars from two million, nine thirty-six up to three million, seven thirty. Your operating expenses were up about a hundred-and-twenty-thousand. So revenues far exceeded the expenditure increase. You did have an operating loss of two-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand, generally a result of the depreciation expense that's charged in that fund as well. And your change in net assets was basically break even after some non-operating income. And that does have a healthy cash balance at the end of the year. We don't see any significant concerns from the auditor's standpoint there. It does have adequate reserves. And basically, a break even change in net assets for two thousand twelve.
Mr. Wishman, we have another question for you.
Yes, sir.
Oh, sanitary.
There we go. We answer our own question. Whereas if it was storm sewer or sanitary-
First one was storm sewer?
Sanitary.
Storm sewer, okay.
Correct. Storm sewer, again, increased, slight increase in revenues, about forty thousand dollars, just over a million dollars. The operating expenses were up about sixty thousand dollars this year from a million, four eleven to a million, four seventy-two. Does generate an operating loss because of the depreciation charge there as well after some contributions from other funds and other income. Did have a positive change in net assets of four-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand. Kind of in the middle of the range when you look at the five years presented there. So again, and good, healthy cash reserves in that fund as well for future investment in the infrastructure that will be needed. Like to just show the bond ratings. This is from the Moody's, I believe. And you are a big A, little a, two, the third from the highest level. Above, certainly above the average when it comes to the bond rating. I know a lot of, a lot of people will ask, what does it take to get a bond rating increase? And I wish I could tell you the answer to that. It's a magic formula that they have that they don't share with me. But again, they look at continued growth, tax base, debt burden, those types of things. We'll look at the debt burden here in just a little bit, actually on the next slide. So, which, you know, all the trends appear to be favorable for your, for the city of Shakopee. As you can see, over the five years, the top number, twenty-three million, six fifteen is the gross bonded long-term debt. That has declined over the period. For two thousand twelve, it's nineteen million, sixty thousand, up a little bit from last year with some bonds that were issued. But again, the overall trend is that it is lower over that five years presented, which is certainly a favorable, favorable type of benchmark to watch for. This just shows the debt service schedule in five-year increments. As you see, a vast majority of your debt is due within the two thousand thirteen to two thousand seventeen category, just over ten million dollars of the nineteen million and very little, just about three million dollars in the very last category, two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-seven. So again, fairly short-term, fairly aggressive repayment schedule, which is always a positive as well. Last couple of slides, just kinda looks at some general fund revenues and expenditures per capita. This is two thousand eleven information. Do have Shakopee, Savage, Chanhassen, and Chaska. Yours is the left bar. The, again, total expenditures slightly higher than some of the neighboring cities. Revenues as well. Tax revenues very consistent with your neighbor, with Savage at three seventy-nine compared to three fifty-three. So again, and all cities vary in what's captured in the general fund as well. So you do need to take, take this information with a little bit of analysis as well to say, are we comparing apples to apples or not? You may for some and you may not for others. But when you look at the expenditure side, it shows the general government is one of the lower components. Public safety is one of the higher components compared to your neighbors. Public works, a little bit lower, and then the recreation area is slightly higher than others as well. So just kinda shows you, pretty consistent with that pie chart that we looked at, kinda where your dollars are flowing and how that compares to other cities in the area. Finally, this is for the governmental fund. So this is not just the general fund, but it's all the special revenues. It's anything, everything but the sewer and the storm sewer fund essentially. And some very favorable trends here. Your outstanding debt is the lowest of the ones presented. So again, a very low debt burden compared to others. Total revenue is right in line. Tax revenues, three eighty-five. So that means your general fund is carrying basically all the levy, whereas the other cities do have general and other governmental funds that have levies. So as a result, when you combine it all together, you do see that you have a favorable tax comparison from a revenue, tax revenues per capita. And then capital outlay very much in line with the others, other cities there. One sixty-seven compared to the high of one ninety-seven and the low of one oh nine. That can vary from year to year based on just your budget, what your needs are, et cetera. So again, very, very favorable information. Congratulations on a successful audit. And with that, I'd be happy to entertain some questions.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, I saved mine until he got done with his presentation.
That was very sweet of you.
I actually have a couple of them.
Go for it.
The nine-point-five fund balance. Now, most people sitting at home think we're sitting on almost ten million dollars, which isn't the case. Case is that we receive the tax money twice a year. So when we get the first half of taxes, that has to carry us for six months until we get the second half of taxes. And that's what that nine-point-five is, which is roughly half of our operating expense, if you will, for the year.
That is correct. And as a result, the December is generally a high point in the cash flow cycle. As a result, you do need that fund balance to carry you through till May, essentially, when that first half of the collection comes in at the county level. And that is the reason why the state auditor does recommend that roughly that fifty percent of fund balance level to carry you through the highs and lows of the cash flow cycle. So you are exactly right. That fund balance is needed to carry on the day-to-day operations when it comes to April, May. And, you know, certainly is something that, from the office of state auditor's standpoint and from our standpoint, is necessary and certainly a reasonable number to maintain.
Second question, Mayor.
Yes.
The drop in our taxable tax capacity. Is that attributed to the lowering of market values or the new market value exclusion or a combination of both?
I believe that would be a combination of both.
Okay.
I don't have a breakout of what the factors, which would be a higher weighting or lower weighting, but I believe that would both would be impacted.
I'm sure the market value exclusion would have to be a part of that because that came into effect before this audit period.
Correct.
And there's nothing we could do about it. So it removed a portion of the value from the, from the city tax capacity. But I was wondering if the actual devaluing of properties also played into that? You're telling me that's the case?
Yes, I believe it does.
Okay, and then-
And that's probably why you see it a little bit more pronounced in twelve because of the exclusion coming in, a little bit larger drop, correct?
Okay, so then the last part of that question is, when we do tax abatement for nine years on a, on a development coming to Shakopee, that new tax capacity of that development doesn't come on until after that abatement period?
I believe that's correct. I would have to double-check the calculations. I, I believe so because it would, I don't believe it'd be captured till it's online per se.
And then my last question, it has to do with the sewer fund. Currently, we have, how many sewer credits? Four hundred sewer credits at value of twenty-four hundred apiece?
For economic development.
Now, that value was turned back to the city from the Met Council. And when we look at our sewer fund, which has more in it than what this shows, does that dollar amount show them that value in there? So let's say the sewer fund has twelve million dollars in it. And of these four hundred sewer credits valued at twenty-four hundred apiece, roughly eight hundred thousand dollars. So if we use them for economic development, does it lower that, that fund by that amount? And if so, do we then replenish it by raising sewer rates?
And the answer is, sorry? No, you're not gonna raise your rates? It is captured in the sewer fund?
Okay.
Page in the audit.
Yeah, page thirty-four on the audit book of, yeah.
I can see this here.
Yep.
Put my glasses on.
The long-term SAC credits is a non-current asset?
Councilmember Lehman, last year was the first year we brought the SAC credits actually as a visual part into the sewer fund. And you'll see it on the balance sheet, statement of net position. That's the new term this year because all the buses-
Is there a way to put that on the screen?
Huh? Is there a way to put that on the screen?
Sure. If we can get the camera up from the top, we can do that.
How do I bring this up? I got, I got my camera.
Wow.
It's only on one training so far, okay?
Is this new equipment?
This is.
Might as well test it out.
You see it's up in the ceiling up there.
That number right there, that's the, the long-term credit.
That was the balances of twelve thirty-one, twenty-twelve. Now, that was the amount that we had booked. And what those sewer credits represent was the amount as of the twelve thirty-one value that Met Council placed on them. Now, when you're asking, does the use of the SAC credits then in turn impact the sewer rates?
Well, does it lower the, the total in that fund? It's gonna lower that fund by, so we used them all up, it would lower it by four hundred and ninety-two thousand, is that right?
It does not lower the cash position.
Okay.
Because it is not in the cash position. It's actually just shown in the balance sheet because it really never was a cash exchange to the city. So when you utilize them, you're actually utilizing one piece of the balance sheet, not the cash. So in order for it to impact rates to, let's say, an average homeowner, that would have to be a conscious choice of the policymakers.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, so I can understand it in my lay mind. We could track it as a, a credit instead of a dollar amount, but you being a financial person opted to track it as a dollar amount instead?
Right, well, we actually try and represent it to the reader as a current asset. It's available for usage.
Right, with the dollar attached, dollar amount attached to it.
Correct. And it will decline and as Mr. Leek and Mr. Lonie and I have talked about, I anticipate by the end of two thousand thirteen, those will be gone. You will not have a balance there in two thousand thirteen. Because you're, you're slow consuming them based on the recommendation of Met Council.
I want to make sure that as we use them, that that dollar amount goes away and lowers that fund by that amount, that we don't-
Right. You don't build that fund up by passing on a rate increase in an incremental amount equal to that. Correct. I understand.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on that?
That's all I had.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Other questions? Councilor Clay?
Fund balances, auditors like them. Banks do, and bond companies like them. So that, the healthier our fund balances, the better interest rate we get when we go out for bonds each year, correct?
Correct.
Looking at all of our, I forget, is it twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-seven fund balances? Thirty now? Okay. Looking at all thirty, not the same time, of course, all thirty of our fund balances. There are those certain persons who seem to think that this is just money sitting there that's wasting away and that we should be spending rather than levying taxpayers from one year to the next. In your review of all of these funds, are there any of them that you would deem to be excessively high?
No, not in my opinion. There's a lot of them that are assigned or designated or reserved, if you want to say, for various projects, capital-type projects that are ongoing. They all have a particular use and that's why they're in, obviously, in different funds. If they're not in the general fund, they all appear, in my opinion, to be reasonable levels, not excessive in any, in any way.
So of all the funds that we might have access to, to drive down in order to lessen the annual levy, you can't think of any funds that are particularly healthy that we might look at, or are they all basically where they should be?
Well, you know, that would be a-
Nice political position.
It's a, it's a political question for an accountant, and I know this is difficult.
Yeah, no, there's, there are a variety of, you know, a lot of them are designated for capital or debt service. Those really are not available for any other purpose. When you look at some of the other government types, again, those are mostly restricted for debt service and capital projects. You do have some internal service funds. Those are reasonable levels. Those sometimes can be used to supplement. That would probably be the only type of internal service one, be the only type that I would consider possibly being on the table. But again, I don't believe those are excessive and they're just doing their job, accumulating the resources and reinvesting in for all funds of the city there.
Our neighbor to the south, Prior Lake, two, three years ago, had a mayor that ran with the campaign slogan that all this, of Prior Lake's service or their funds were way too high and they didn't need them that high. So he got elected and they spent down during one or two years quite a bit of those funds. And then another year later, had to wind up increasing their, the tax levy on all of its citizens substantially in order to make up for those funds that they drained. I would hate to see that be repeated here. And from what I'm hearing from you, there's, in your professional opinion, there are no, there is no low-hanging fruit, so to speak, in any of these fund balances?
Correct.
Thank you.
I didn't know if you were done or not.
I could go on forever.
I know.
Because this stuff just, this is what I live for every year.
All right, any other questions? All right, seeing none, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, great job.
I really appreciate you being here. And thank you to Julie and all the financial staff for putting everything together and putting us in a good position.
And Mayor, I just want to say, we did put our staff and our departments through a lot of grueling routine this year. This year's audit was intense and we put a lot of departments into a lot of questions and a lot of research and a lot of work that they had not previously worked with before. that they had not previously worked with before, and I am very pleased with the way people dug in and cooperated. And a really special thank you to the finance and clerk staff because they did a phenomenal job. So, thank you for your support.
Great job. Thank you.
The auditors probably had something to do with it, too.
Yeah, the auditors were there. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, um, we are going to skip to item number nine B one here real quick for the massage license application. And we'll come right back to nine A one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As directed, the police department is bringing back resolution seven-two-nine-two. This is the same resolution that was presented to you at the last council meeting on April sixteenth. At that time, you directed staff to work through an interpreter with Waypan. Every day, every business day since then, staff has tried to call and visit in-person Waypan. We have not been successful in having direct one-on-one contact with her. We've been told by a staff member that she is out of, out of state. There has been a closed sign on the business now for over a week. Um, I did have firsthand contact with an employee this week who was boxing things up. Uh, they have, they showed us a letter, their lease has been terminated in that, uh, that building effective, excuse me, May thirty-first. Uh, they will be out of there, and they already began moving stuff out. Uh, I asked what the plan was, and I was informed by that employee that Waypan is moving her business to another city. Uh, we do have a translator here this evening, however, I do not see Waypan here, uh, tonight. So for the reasons outlined in the resolution, um, we would off, uh, ask that you approve resolution number seven-two-nine-two denying a massage therapy business license and massage therapist license to Waypan of excellent Asian, Asian massage.
As a way?
I'd like to offer resolution seventy-two ninety-two, a resolution of the city of Shakopee, Minnesota, denying a massage therapy business license and massage therapist license to Waypan, doing businesses excellent Asian massage, move its adoption.
Catch, Lehman?
Second.
Second, do we have any discussion? Catch, Lehman?
And I'm gonna base my second on the information provided us by the chief of police.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, others in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you, chief. Move back up to nine A one, request by RAR Malting to rezone property from highway business B one to heavy industrial I two. Ordinance number eight sixty-eight.
Mr. Leek?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. In light of the items that you still have, I think I can be pretty brief. Um, and I have not had training, so I apologize. But it looks like magically I have the document camera. And in your package, you have a copy of both the land use exhibits that are provided, and you'll remember the original request to you, requested that property currently is owned B one, both on the north and south side of County Road sixty-nine be rezoned to I two, heavy industrial. Uh, you tabled this item at that meeting, and the request has essentially been revised to request that they be allowed to withdraw the request to rezone the property on the north side of sixty-nine and are now only asking that the property on the south side, as indicated on this exhibit, be rezoned to I two. The ordinance that's a part of your package was prepared consistent with the planning commission recommendation. However, if you decide that you're in agreement with the revised request to rezone the properties on the south, which you gave some indication of at the last meeting, then your requested action would be to offer that ordinance with direction to staff to revise it to identify only the properties on the south side of sixty-nine. We do have Jesse Tice and another representative from RAR here, if you have questions. They have some lovely exhibits. If you have questions for me, I'm happy to take them.
Catch, Lehman?
Mayor, do we have any, uh, utility water lines or lines and anything like that, any of the alleys or easements on the south side property that's being requested?
Uh, I'm not aware that there are any requests for easements, and that would be not addressed with a zoning change in any event.
We would be able to retain them if so needed?
Uh, we would retain them if needed, but at that point at which there's, um, some change in the development pattern. Again, this is a rezoning request, which does not typically trigger our ability to request specific easements. And we didn't have input regarding any that would be needed.
Well, I'm asking if we have any currently.
I don't know that I can answer that question fully because I haven't reviewed all of the land title information. Perhaps Mr. Tice can. I know they've been through about seven years of title review on all their properties.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Leek? Mr. Tice?
Jesse Tice, Chief Operating Officer of RAR Malting Company.
Gary Lee, President and CEO of RAR Malting Corporation.
Welcome.
Relative to, uh, Councilman Lehman's request on the, uh, utility easements, uh, we are in the process of, uh, we have an active replating request in front of the, well, actually, we're, we're still formulating that, but at such times that's brought forward, we have and are already in the process of addressing any easement questions that there might be with both Spuck and the city. Um, I guess the, the, uh, the way to start this, uh, tonight might be to just kinda give an overview of basically how we refine our request. And, uh, I apologize, I did have a PowerPoint ready to go on a stick, but I realized, I wasn't sure we were up to full speed here. So what we, what we've basically done now is we've restricted our request to those areas to the south, which is basically the former CH Carpenter property. When you look at, uh, this Google map, basically, it shows that the current zoning on this property is split by some way. Uh, this piece is already I two. This piece was, uh, currently at B one, and so that's kind of an artifact of the past. And I think that part should be pretty straightforward. Uh, our current plan is, right now, to try to revise the property at the former CH Carpenter site. By that, what we're looking at is trying to determine a sighting of a maintenance storage warehouse for RAR Malting Company itself. Um, I brought the big board, and I don't think we can pick that all up, but it shows a twenty-plus acre site for our entire operations, and as you can imagine, we're becoming landlocked. We're a growing operation. And I'll have Gary maybe address that specifically and the parts of our operation that are growing. But a lot of people have asked what our intent is with purchasing some of this property, and I guess the answer is, in our original zoning request, working with city staff, our intent was to try to get and gain as much flexibility as we possibly could in that first request. Our long-term intent, as you know, for the property that we own, are just recently purchased along the riverbank, well, along the path in, in actuality, was never to build an, a large industrial structure in those areas. Um, our intent right now, our original intent, was to construct a warehouse and bagging facility for the newest part of our business, the Brewer Supply Group, which services the craft industry. And again, I'll have Gary talk specifically about that. Um, we understand with the original proposal, a few neighbors were excited, a few councilmen were excited, and that was not our original intent. I think what our plan now is to restrict our request for those areas at the CH Carpenter site, to define what we plan on doing with our future maintenance needs and warehousing needs. And at the same time, this long-range plan for the Brewer Supply Group warehouse, which we still plan on being on this site, we'll have a chance to complete the design, to actually have site drawings complete with detail so that everybody can see our intent, and it maybe will satisfy the needs of the, of the neighborhood group that, that initially was concerned. Um, we conducted a meeting at our, at our, at our office about a week ago on Monday, and we invited all neighbors. And it was a very well-received meeting, um, and we promised them that our intent is, as we go forward in the next two years with this plan, that we'll, we'll keep them in the loop and make sure that what we do plan and putting there is gonna be a project that's gonna be acceptable to everybody. So, are there any questions based on, I guess, on our request for this evening?
I have a question on where we're looking at here. So that, uh, section to the north, so you've purchased where that, the parking lot is there, the used car lot, correct? Right above, and then also, uh, the tree line back to the north, correct?
Exactly, um, Mayor, what we've got here is that, uh, this is actually total rental.
Okay.
And our property starts at about this point, proceeds to the north of total rental, then proceeds all the way down along over to the corner at Scott Street. Okay, then goes north, right up to about the trail or just short of the trail, and makes a long rectangle all the way back to about this point, coming up, jogging over, coming back up. Accomplishing those, the former car lot.
Okay.
And the former share property, which has since been removed.
So that section with the trees between the trail and the car lot through there, what of that is buildable at all?
Well, to be honest with you, in our early analysis, when we purchased this property, we deemed all of this to be relatively unbuildable.
Why's that?
Partially, uh, Mayor, because this, uh, Google map does not properly depict the topography. We've got a fairly serious grade change in here. There's also some basic, I think, some mining was done in some of this at some point. So the idea that we would remove all these trees and put fill in there and try to construct something on that right now is pretty limited. We actually did talk early on with staff, depending on our site development over here, we might in fact be willing to talk to the city about a possible donation of some of this property because it is in such close proximity to the path. So that's certainly a possibility.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that?
Doesn't appear so.
Just one last comment maybe, and, and maybe I'll, I'll, I'll ask if Gary can address this also. Um, this, uh, the idea here is that, long-term, we see what we're, we're trying to propose here with the start of this bagging and warehousing facility as a major plus for our business and for the community. And the initial reaction when we came forward with this proposal uh, created so much of a stir that our, it was really not our intent at all. We believe, long-term, that if we do a good job of planning this and laying it out, when we come back to you, whether that's in six months or a year, we hope to have a concept that everybody here embraces rather than questions. So in the meantime, we plan on having plenty of informational meetings and working with everybody, not just our neighbors in the community, but also city staff and anyone else who's interested in talking about this. But maybe what'd be good, just to give you a few minutes of background on RAR Malting Company and Brewer Supply and how that all fits within the company, and I think that's something that Gary can do right now.
Sure, thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, council members and city staff, I appreciate the opportunity to, uh, talk to you today. What I'd like to do is just take a minute just to differentiate a little bit between RAR Malting Company and BSG or Brewer Supply Group. Uh, they're both subsidiaries of RAR Corporation today. And RAR Malting is, uh, the facility that you know that's been here since nineteen thirty-five. It's a manufacturing facility, turns barley into brewer's malt. Uh, the company that we're talking about, Brewer Supply Group, is not a manufacturing company. It's a buy-sell, marketing and distribution business. So what that does is it sells to the, as Jesse said, the, the craft market, the smaller brewers across the country. So we have ten warehouses that are roughly fifty to seventy thousand square feet across the country, and we buy product that, uh, is warehoused and stored in those warehouses uh, and then sold to a, a local, uh, regional, through local regional sales reps. Uh, and that includes all ingredients for brewing, not just the malt. So we're importing specialty malts from Germany and the UK. Uh, we, uh, we bring in hops from Wash, the state of Washington. Uh, we deal with a lot of different, uh, types of clarification agents and that sort of thing. Uh, we don't deal with hazardous materials or cleaning agents, and so what, what one of these warehouses would look like would be, uh, uh, basically, uh.
Can you get that picture, Jess?
Would look, uh, something like, like this. This is pretty representative of what we have across the country. And, um, and again, all we're doing is, is, uh, bringing in product on pallets. It's usually bagged, fifty-pound bags, that sort of thing, and, uh, uh, warehouse there and then sold out. Less-than-truckload type deliveries, uh, some UPS, all, all the way down to that sort of size. Uh, that business, we started in two thousand and four, and it's, uh, uh, just to give you an idea, it's, it's almost as big as RAR Malting itself today. So it's at a very rapid growth rate, and, um, uh, we'd really like to be able to bring, uh, that warehouse facility here. We need one in the upper Midwest. We think that this would be a good spot to have it. Um, uh, it would probably only employ four or five people, uh, the way that most of our warehouses are set up today. But Brewer Supply Group itself is also headquartered here, and, um, that's over on Third Avenue. The building that we just recently built over there houses their headquarters, and we have about, uh, oh, I think it's thirty, roughly thirty-two or three people in that business and that office today. Um, and we will be hiring more there.
Which we've added eight in the last six months and haven't been asking for any subsidies.
Councilman Lehman?
My, my question to either one of you would be, how do you put this type of use on the north side where there's residential uses that have been here for so long without, you know, how do you cohabitate the two side by side without, I guess that's gonna be one of the big concerns that I'm gonna have at some point. I'm assuming there's a lot of truck, truck traffic for what you're proposing on the north side down the road to deliver and pick up and deliver.
Councilman Lehman, maybe I'll start that, Gary, if it's okay. Um, what we've, uh, what we envision right now is that at the current capacity that we're looking at, we talk at our facility in Casota, Minnesota, which really would be displaced to here. We have no more than twenty-one trucks a, a week in a seven-day period, so it's not a significant amount of trucks. The other advantage we have is that the origin for the majority of the material that will come to this site and be bagged is coming from our loadout facility just down on the west end of our property. So it's gonna be a, basically, a very short run. Trucks won't have to be sitting here staged. This will be truly just in time in the sense that they'll be able to see the truck down the street, so there is one advantage there. The other part of what we're talking about doing with trying to finalize our building plans in our design is that we'll figure out the size of what we need here. Um, we don't add, we don't, right now, we are, we're looking at something just above a forty-five thousand square foot building. So if you look at that within this area, again, these buildings are gone, these are out of here. We really believe we're not gonna be too imposing, and we're not, certainly shouldn't be too imposing to the neighbors to the west. But again, that's part of the reason why I wanna take this project back, do a good job of laying it out and find, you know, really finalizing where we're at. We've been in discussions with a few neighbors already, asking about their impacts. Uh, one of the positive comments we received at the meeting the other night was that when people looked at our building design, and they've, they actually had a chance to see what we were talking about building, their end result was, at least one comment was, well, it's certainly gonna look better than what's in the neighborhood right now. So, again, the answer to your question is, we, and you and I spoke personally about buffering and the need for buffering, especially when you have two zones that are drastically different. I think that's something we need to talk to city staff with as part of this planning process, so. So we'll certainly do that.
What's, one more question, what, your other operation that does this, is it a twenty-four-seven or is it during a day for shift only? Or what kind of hours do they operate?
Um, they are primarily a day shift operation.
Okay.
What are the questions? All right. Thank you, gentlemen?
Thank you.
Um. So we are looking at, uh, ordinance number eight sixty-eight as it was, uh, proposed. Earlier, so we can either approve it as it was originally requested or rezone, uh, only the south side of First Avenue. What do, uh, folks think? Councilman Lehman?
I'll offer ordinance eight sixty-eight, uh, modifying it to the south side of First Avenue, west of Babgar.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Senator Councilor Whiting, discussion? I would much rather see us just to handle the north and the south side right now, myself. Um, because we know that the hill is not buildable. And if it were to be amenable to the applicant to do such a thing, I would rather just get the north and the south side done so we don't have to waste staff time and their time and our time coming back to look at this because I think it, uh, is a very good plan and what they're talking about with the I-two work is a lot better than what's currently there right now. Um, so I'm very much not opposed to, uh, just doing the south side, but an efficiency of everyone's time. If we don't have major issues with the north side of it. I would love for us to see, do the north and the south side knowing that what our concerns were. At least from what I was hearing about the concerns last, uh, meeting where the, where the slope was and that northern section of the north side of one sixty-nine, of, of sixty-nine was the concern, knowing that that's not buildable through there and that can't be, um, built out. I would rather just see it, let's get it done and out of the way myself. Councilor Whiting?
Uh, I'm still concerned with those blocks near Scott Street and, and I don't believe that they're unbuildable. I think it just costs too much at this time to build them. I like Mr. Tice's idea of, um, bringing the neighborhood in, showing them what he's proposed. Um, getting the buy-in that way. I don't think we're, from what I'm hearing, in that much of a hurry to rush this through. Um, I think they can come back at a certain point and, um, work with us on that and I think that's the best step to go.
Okay. Councilman Lehman?
I certainly don't have enough information to tell you if there's any impacts or not on the north side.
Well, it went through Planning Commission and they nearly unanimous, there was, is one vote in dissent, but it went through Planning Commission on the north side perfectly fine without an issue.
Heavy industrial and extra residential, no buffering? Obviously going to have some problems.
It's across the street from Rar. I mean, that's, that's, that's highly industrial as it is. It's right across the street already, so what differences make of it?
That's been there for thirty-five years, you know?
Right. Councilor Clay?
Yeah, I agree with Councilor Lehman on this respect. The, I want to see, in fact, I'm not even sure I want to, on the north side, go with industrial, maybe a special zoning or a PUD kind of zoning. A few years back, Rar came to us with, um, I think it was potential use permit requests for their, uh, a building to cover their, uh, cleaning operations for the railcars before they load them with their product. Um, the design and pictures we saw at Planning Commission made it look like a country cottage. What was actually built was a plain tilt-up Fabcon concrete slabs with a plain steel roof. Didn't look anything like the pictures I saw at the Planning Commission. So I'm, I'm a little bit leery from that experience. I'd be very happy though to go ahead and rezone the south side of First Avenue to get this started.
And I'm not saying by any means I'm going to vote against rezoning the south side. I just would rather get things done than having to talk about it again. Um, all right, so any other further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Sir? Um, do we, um, or a five-minute break is being requested? Anyone, Councilman Lehman?
Motion for a five-minute recess?
Do we have a second? Senator Councilor Clay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passes four to one for a, uh, five-minute break. We will, uh, an eight-minute break. We will reconvene at nine o'clock.
Some time during the meeting?
The best thing to do would be to take an interfund loan from one of the healthier enterprise funds that we talked about earlier tonight. But we would add about a four percent return on investment so that that fund would be more than compensated for the loan. But again, you would not have to sell bonds for that particular item. Our recommendation would be that you amortize this over ten years rather than five years. If you do that, even with the cart fee, we estimate that you'd save each customer about eighty cents per month. That's about nine dollars sixty cents per year. At the end of the ten years, you would then own it. Normally, these carts with normal care and feeding will last about fifteen years. So between years ten and years fifteen, you'd see a significant savings on that. We would write the contract so that it would be the hauler's responsibility to take care of these, to deliver them, to maintain them, and to replace them when needed. If somebody backs in one and destroys it, they'd be billed for that the same way in most cases haulers do that now. So there would not be a great deal of extra administrative cost from a public work standpoint. Again, it's something that we would build into the contract. As we look at the pros and cons of this, the recommendation of the committee would be to go with the city owning the carts. But that's again, a change in the business model that we've had. Dan Crivitt is here tonight from Footh Engineering. He is the one that has helped us go through this, and if you have some operational questions, he might be the one to refer those to. But I'm putting it before you tonight in terms of where you would like to see us go.
Councilor Chairman.
So the question that I have is being that we have a consulting group and I am not familiar with this industry in depth. Are the standards for the carts? So are there industry standards that have been established? And we know what it looks like today in terms of what the trucks look like and how they hook and pick up the cart and dump the garbage into the truck. Is that a standard that's been established in that industry, like a UPC code that is not going to change? Do we see that for a long term, like ten to fifteen year? If we purchased the carts, that they would still be the correct type over that long term? I guess that's my biggest concern in the city making that investment because it seems that the technology has been advancing over the past several years with now the single sort being an option. And I would just want to make sure that that's something that is standard.
The actual pickup mechanism would be something that would be out there at the time that we would put this out to bid again. And so the contractor would have to make adjustments to whatever mechanism they do have. Do you have anything to add on that one, Dan?
My understanding of the question Dan Crivitt with Footh Infrastructure, Mr. Mayor and council member, is that with an automated collection system, the cart is actually grabbed by a robotic arm. And today, the carts are standardized to the point that they can be collected with most models and makes of truck. As well, they're semi-automated that requires a man to, a crew person to hook it. And those are also standard features for the grab bar. So yes, there are specs that can be detailed such that a request for bids when you're going out for purchase of carts is a fairly standard document today. So yes, on the design and operation of the lifting mechanisms. And I think you also asked about the UPC code?
No, I'm just saying that like the UPC code has been standardized in the retail industry. Is this standardized in this industry in the same way where we wouldn't see any major evolution of change in a ten to fifteen year period?
The trend is clearly to more automated collection, and the cart would be specified to withstand a variety of automated collection arms and mechanisms. For instance, one of the challenges is a cart could be too small for some of the grabbing arms. So that would be a part of the specifying standards in the RFP document, RFB document.
Okay.
Councilor Clay.
In the one point five million dollars, are we talking about two carts per household? One for garbage and one for recycling?
Yes, one of the things that we found with the RFPs that came back is that it's almost universally a single sort system. That was the thing that you were most interested in when we made the decision to go out for proposals. Therefore, it would probably be the, an identical cart. One might be a different color to differentiate it for recycling purposes from garbage, but they would be identical carts. We have information regarding what each household currently has. Majority have sixty-five or sixty gallon containers. There are some that have smaller, there are some that have larger. So we would know about what mix there would be when we would order these. The advantage that we have is that it would likely have a, an adhesive sticker that would go on the side rather than being hot pressed in with City of Shakopee or whatever there might be. So that way, we could always change it if we have a different hauler and we needed to put different contact information on it in five years or ten years.
Councilor Lehman was up first.
Two questions, Mayor. First is where would we store twenty-two thousand garbage containers?
Again, this would be the responsibility of the hauler, not the city.
Okay. And I'm kind of unsure about this making four percent on the taxpayers' money to purchase them and then charging them an administrative fee on top of it when they already pay for all the staff members in the city.
There are times when we get involved, I mean, my time, involved with the contractor renewal or groups or people such as that. Those are being paid for through property tax dollars. Not everybody in Shakopee uses the city's organized system. This is probably the most fair way of doing it to make sure that those that are using the system are helping to pay for the system.
But that will come back before us when it comes to the final decisions, correct? As to, so we don't need to hammer that one out tonight?
Well, but in fairness, the people that are using it are forced to use it whether they agree or disagree with it. It's, they don't have an option.
There are certain, there are advantages and disadvantages that we've talked about in the past on an organized system. Whether you feel uncomfortable with four percent and you want to go with something else, that's your choice. That's a recommendation that we had from looking at it at a finance standpoint and what's going to be likely a return on investment over the next ten years.
And then lastly, Mayor, does it really save the end user any money if they're paying a separate administrative fee?
Again, if you look at what the difference, the average difference between what the haulers have had as their city-owned carts versus they own it, it's about, as I recall, about two dollars and twenty-eight cents. If you add in four percent and the cart amortization fee and an administrative fee, it's still about an eighty cent per month savings. If you take that times eleven thousand customers, times five years, it's a significant savings.
Councilor Whiting.
Well, to address one point, Mr. Mayor, Councilor Lehman said, "I'd rather keep the money at the city than be paying this extra money over that five-year period to the garbage hauler." But one concern I do have is with the single sort system and some of our discussions we've had that more of the trash gets recycled. Now, if we go with our current plan of, you know, I have a sixty, sixty-five gallon container. Now all of a sudden, I want to change it because I'm not filling it every week because I'm recycling more. We talked about a sliding scale with different sizes. Maybe over time, we're going to be buying more, more containers because people want to downsize that trash. That might be a downside that we haven't considered here.
That's a possibility, and certainly there would be transition time as people looked at that. One of the things the committee looked at was whether, you know, if we have more people recycling, maybe we go to an every other week collection on garbage. We thought that that probably wasn't what we wanted to do right now, but it was considered.
Thank you.
Councilor Clay.
So just want to ask you one more time this to be sure I understand that this one point five million dollar investment, that's for two containers per household?
Correct.
And the current containers we have are owned by Dick's sanitation?
Actually owned by the city.
The current ones we have are owned by the city?
Those, a lot of those were paid for through Scott County grant monies.
Could we continue using those?
We've talked about that. We would give people probably the option to keep those. I have one that's about fifteen years old from a previous community, and I use that frequently. But if people do not want it, we provide for pickup.
What's the longest period of time that a Shakopee citizen would have had one of those carts?
One of the blue bins or one of the rollaway?
One of the blue bins.
One of the blue bins, using those since at least two thousand before.
About two thousand and one?
Probably, probably only started with Dick's sanitation, two thousand and one.
It's about twelve years. Because I still have mine, old blue one. It's got a big crack down one side of it. It still functions perfectly well as a garbage can, but I can no longer take a bath in it.
It's a concern.
Are you talking about owning the wheeled garbage carts or the?
The wheeled ones.
The wheeled garbage carts Dix owns. I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the recycling.
No, not the little red bins.
No, that's owned by Dix.
Okay. So and if we buy our own, the garbage hauler we contract with is going to store them for us somewhere?
Correct. That's one of the things that's in negotiation for contract.
Funding for that, we would bond?
No, the recommendation would be to do an interfund loan.
An interfund loan, and the money would come from the monthly collection for?
Storm drain, sewer, whatever, yes. It would be, as you noted tonight earlier, we have some healthier funds, and that would be the source of funding for that. We just want to make certain that as the bills are paid monthly.
Tonight, we determined that we have adequate funds, not healthy funds, not overly healthy funds. I thought it was very clear on that.
From one of the adequate funds, we would make the loan.
All right.
Thank you.
We use the funds that we're not supposed to use that are dedicated for something else.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, entertain a motion or a discussion at all? I like staff's recommendation to purchase them. Councilor Whiting?
I see it as an investment, keeping money and less of a fee, I think you said eighty cents, per house, per month.
Depending on which one, that's about the average that we have estimated at this point.
And creating an asset for the city. So in five years, it's much easier to switch haulers if that's the direction we want to go. It just takes a whole equation out of the process of bidding this out. So I would, oh, let me find the motion here.
Basically, we need a consensus if you want to do it by motion for the city to direct staff to negotiate, or excuse me, to bring back recommendation with city ownership of the cart. That would be back before you tonight in two weeks with preferred vendor for RFP.
I'll make a motion to direct staff to look into purchasing the carts and bringing that back with our, in two weeks.
Preferred recommendation for the RFP vendor.
The preferred recommendation for the RFP.
Who has a second?
Second.
Second, Councilor Clay. Discussion, Councilor Lehman.
Is it safe to assume that down the road, we're not going to have to hire, hire staff to monitor these?
If we get it in the contract as we anticipated, there should be no need for that.
Can we make sure that's in the contract?
We'll make sure that the contractor is responsible for care and feeding and ordering and everything involved with that.
All right.
It will be part of it for the first, for this five-year contract that we entered into, but from there on, we'll have to figure out exactly how that works.
The next contract.
Yes. Councilor Clay.
I am assuming Dick's sanitation is one of the bidders or will be one of the bidders.
They are one of the respondents, yes.
They would have then a natural advantage in that they already own the carts, and if we went with them, we would not need to buy our own?
They did provide an alternative, an alternative bid. All those things will be factored in, but we will be bringing a recommendation to you two weeks from tonight based on what we think is a level playing field.
Even though, so you're going to come back with a bid from whoever bids on it, plus Dick's sanitation? We'll have a two-tiered bid, one using the carts they already own that everybody has, and two, or two going out with city-purchased carts. Am I understanding this correctly?
Might get a deal on some used carts.
We haven't made a judgment on that yet, I'm reminded.
It will come back in two weeks. Councilor Lehman.
Have we put out bids yet?
The, the proposals are back, yes.
In our proposal that we put out, did it, did it ask for the respondents to give us a price for, for this service with carts and without carts?
Correct, and all six responded on that.
Okay, so they're already in?
Correct.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Pass is three to two.
Thank you.
All right. We will move back up to nine B two is where we're at now. Approval of position description authorization to post for full-time firefighters.
Chief. Mayor, council, thank you for having me tonight. Tonight in front of you is a job, job description for the full-time firefighters. And the, the, looking for authorization to post for the applications for the four openings internally. At our last meeting in November, council asked us to go out and talk to local employers and the chamber. At, in late February, we did talk to the chamber. In mid-March, we had a luncheon at a fire station, Fire Station One that the mayor attended. And also in April, the end of April, we talked to all of the firefighters. We had an open meeting. From that, we came up with what you have in front of you right now. Our recommendation is to go ahead with the job description, get that approved, and go ahead and hire our four, fourth, our four full-time firefighters. With that, I'll answer any questions you have.
Questions? All right, Councilor Whiting.
Chief, some of the concerns I have are, not to take anything away from our firefighters that we have now, but my concern is are we getting the best qualified firefighters by your recommendation of hiring within?
I would say yes. We have forty-five firefighters that are very qualified to do this job, and they're doing it right now. They know our equipment, they know our SOGs, there's less training involved, they're going to hit the ground running. I believe we have the best qualified candidates inside our organization already. By going outside our organization, outside the city to hire these firefighters, we would have a, a big training curve that we'd have to go through as far as how our apparatus run, how we operate, how our SOGs are. It could take six months to, a year to get these guys up and running.
Mr. Mayor, if I can continue. My, my concern is, is are we creating that, the good old boy club, you know, by keeping that within, not opening it up? Are we actually getting the best people that are out there? The other issue I have and concern is that under the minimum qualifications, you're giving the opportunity to, to get the apparatus operator, EMT operators, giving them a year to get those qualifications. And this, we'd be looking for that right up front?
This job description was set up so if in the future, we, we decided to hire more firefighters and we went outside our organization, or you decided to go outside the organization, it's set up to go either way. Our firefighters are already certified in, in FAO, our urgency, fire, fire apparatus operator. We have fire one, fire two. They're all NIMS compliant.
You're saying all of them are already operators?
Correct. All, all except for our brand, like the last three that we hired, they're going through the class right now.
They're also first responder certified for?
They're all first res- They're all first responders and probably, we've probably got fifteen that are EMTs already.
Further questions? Council Lehman?
Well, I'd like to see us try other alternatives that we've talked about and never tried to see if any of them will work first. I, I, I would see as hiring a full-time staff as, as a last resort if everything else fails. And we haven't tried anything else. We don't know what, what works and what doesn't.
What else are you talking about?
Well, I would make the, uh, full-time secretary position a firefighter so that that person's already in the building and be able to respond. Um, I'd utilize our public works folks that we have that are firefighters. I'd utilize Pitt Snyder who's on city staff as firefighters and then you've got the chief to be the commander of the, of the operation. So you pretty much have what you need already. We're just not utilizing it properly. And the only complaint I've heard about response time is from the chief, not from the community.
I, I disagree with that fully.
That's fine.
But.
He came forward and said that he wanted to see that time reduced and, and I, I can respect that. You're, you're in charge of that department and I'm sure you'd like the response time to be under thirty seconds. And if my house is on fire, I would too. And I, I, I am a little worried about some of the internal structure we're gonna have because I, you know, I, there's two sides of the fire department. One side that are expecting these positions and the other side that would really like it to remain, uh, voluntary. Where the voluntary folks that are, are saying if the daytime guys that are, are full-time staff, they get paid to respond to these calls, then we're not gonna respond. We really don't need to have that internal struggle going on if we don't have to. So I, last, I would say that if we had our priorities in order prior to this, we would have probably done this before we would hire a natural resource person or a communications coordinator and these other positions, which I view less important than, than public safety. But that being said, I, I'm just gonna let it go at, I would like to try other options first and make this a last, last resort.
Alright, let's, let Chief respond to that, especially the first part, please, with the, the other options with using, uh, yourself and, uh, Mr. Pitt Snyder and other folks for response, please.
Well, right now, our public works people do respond. They respond to every call that they're possibly can, uh, respond to. There are times during the day that they're laying asphalt or concrete, are doing something that's critical to the operation that they can't leave. It, it still comes down to the response time from the time that the firefighter leaves their work to get to the fire station. That, that is the time that we're, we're talking about here. And right now, that, and then that truck leaving the station, that's a seven-minute average re- gap that we're, we, we, we have right now. So when a truck leaves the station, we're already seven minutes behind that fire. By having the four individuals that are at the station already, we're getting out of the station within a minute. We've gained six minutes on that fire already. That's the bottom line.
Council Clay?
It's my, it's my understanding there are probably very few metropolitan, Minneapolis, St. Paul metropolitan area fire departments working within a district that's, has about forty thousand residents that doesn't have at least a few full-time firefighters on staff?
The, there are some that do not have full-time, what I'll call strictly firefighters. They have assistant chiefs, deputy chiefs, inspectors, um, numerous positions like that.
These are cities like Bloomington who have a couple hundred firefighters.
Correct.
Total, yeah, where we have, was it forty-five?
Forty-five.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's a big difference.
They're utilizing those people and with a hundred and twenty-five firefighters, they can run a duty crew with a hundred and twenty-five firefighters out of one station running three guys. They can split that, that time up between all a hundred and twenty people.
Council Wyding?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've always said that I thought we should increase the number of volunteers and we've gone back and forth and talked about the time, the restran- uh, restraints that kind of fall around that and getting ten new firefighters isn't gonna necessarily give you any daytime response. It is a concern of mine that it does take a long time to get out of the station during the day. Well, whatever a long time might be. It, it would be a lot shorter if we had people there. We talked a little bit about, uh, rental properties and not to throw any other description on your description here, but that is a possibility that some of those firefighters could be trained in some of that inspections at a future, uh, time or future decision that this body makes. I know you've done a lot of work. We've gone through a lot of different scenarios of how we could, um, manage this daytime response and that, and at the beginning, I was against it totally to try and get a full-time fire department, uh, during the day anyway. I've seen how much work you, the staff has put into doing the discussions, going through all the different scenarios and ideas and, um, over the time, I've come to a decision that I think that's getting four firefighters is, is probably the best, uh, option we can do. I do have some concerns about how we hire them and some of their qualifications though. So I am for the idea of getting four daytime firefighters.
Just, just answer your, on the inspection part, if we did go to housing, um, it's in the job description already as far as inspections.
Okay.
There you go. Council Sherman?
Just, um, the one piece, the one piece that's missing for me is there have been a lot of discussions and a lot of talk and work around conceptually what it needs to look like in landing on the full-time being the, the one that you're recommending and bringing forth here. Just the piece that's missing for me is that we haven't tried anything else. We've talked a lot about it and gotten opinions and, but we haven't actually tried something different before taking this step. So I feel like, I mean, I, I am in agreement with Council Lehman that I feel like we should try something around, whether it be incentives or, um, the way that we hire or do we hire more paid-on call and have a specific, um, requirement for a specific period of time of what their availability has to be to stay on or, um, just things like that that we've talked about in the past.
Council Lehman?
I would add that I spoke with our new economic development person earlier tonight when I met her and, uh, I, I asked that whenever the city gives out tax abatement to a company, we should probably make a, some kind of a contract deal that that abatement is contingent on them, that any employees that work there that are firefighters get to leave that place during a fire. We're, we're paying them millions to come here. We should get some benefit back to the community out of it. And if they don't let the firefighters leave when they're at work, you know, and we can talk about cement blacked up, Chief, but what's more important, the burning house and the person's life or the concrete setting up? Yeah, it's kind of a choice, isn't it?
Council Clay?
If we could afford to actually pay millions of dollars for businesses to come here, we wouldn't be worrying about hiring a few firefighters. Not that you're being hyperbolic by any means, but.
You can only see twenty-five percent of the screen.
Or paying for the carts out of the account that we shouldn't be using.
Yeah.
Uh, my thoughts on this are that, um, we have looked at a lot of other options. Like when we went to and talked to Chamber and talked to other businesses about, um, I thought that was a very good step and it was very clear to me when I was at that meeting that there are options there, but no solutions to our problem with that. And in my, um, my thought is that the, the problem is the dramatic difference between how long it takes us to get to a, to respond, that initial response between seven, eight AM and five PM. And between five PM and seven AM are two totally different animals and we are not serving our residents, um, to the level that we should, um, during those daytime hours. And I really hoped that when we went to the businesses, they'd say, hey, you just haven't ever asked before and, and yeah, we'll be able to let people go. And there were some people that were absolutely, um, like that, that they definitely want to help, but they weren't solutions to make sure that we can, um, guarantee or virtually guarantee that we'll have people to respond during the day like we do at night. Like at night, we can guarantee that we've got people to be there. We, we will be able to have firefighters to the stations within a few minutes, um, because people are home, people aren't at work, people aren't always watching their kids. But during the day, our lives have changed enough that we don't, we simply don't have that. And I think that we need to take the steps as a council to fill that gap. And we have been working on trying to hire people, um, who can respond during the day. Chris asked folks if they're able to respond during the day and, um, for how long now? Have we been asking that question?
Yeah, it's, it's well over.
Right.
Twenty years.
So for a long time, we've been trying to get people who can respond during the day and we have people who say, yes, we can absolutely respond during the day, but when it comes to actually responding during the day is a different thing because people's lives change, they get different jobs, they have kids. Whatever happens, um, we are unable to guarantee that response during the day. And I think that we have been talking about this and I believe the chief, that he's been working on it, um, for a long time now, um, to try and get, to try and get a solution to this because I, I would love to not have to hire full-time. I, I don't think that's, um, the most economic solution, um, to the problem. I would love for business to be able to let their employees go and, and let those kinds of things happen and have enough people that work within Shakopee to get that done. But we, it's simply not where we're at, at this point in time. Um, so I think that we must, we have to, uh, hire, um, at least two, but four on the chief's recommendation, full-time firefighters, to really fill out those crews so that we have that response, we can guarantee to our residents, that we have that during the day, which we cannot do right now. That's my monologue for the night. Other discussion? Motion? Council Clay?
Make a motion to offer, or motion to adopt the attached position description for full-time firefighters and authorize appropriate staff to post four openings for internal applicants.
Do you have a second?
I'll offer an amendment.
Okay.
I will.
You second and then you can amend, yeah.
I will second that for the ability to offer that amendment.
Yeah.
And, uh, my concern is that, uh, it's open to external and internal candidates.
Now, it's up to him to accept your amendment.
He's thinking.
Well, Mr. Mayor, that's not technically correct. If, if council member, uh, Wyding wants to amend it, he can make a motion to amend it to add the word for external and internal applications. He can make that motion. You'll need a second and don't need to get passed, but you can make that motion.
Can he do that as a friendly amendment to the motion maker?
He can, he can.
If it's accepted.
Oh, if it's accepted, yes.
So what has happened? Is there a second to my motion yet?
Yes.
There's a second and, um, either you need to accept the, the amended second or Council Wyding needs a second to his second, basically. Is that correct?
Alright, I accept the amendment.
Alright, discussion?
So just so it's clear, the motion that's on the table now is a motion to approve everything as staff presented, but to add external and internal candidates in the motion.
Correct. So Council Wyding, why is this any different than, um, when we promote from within the police department? Um, we have a very good process for promoting to captain and to sergeants and things like that that all happen internally because those folks know all the processes, know everything that we, that we do, and that happens as an internal process. Why is this in your mind different than having that happen?
I think we're, we're asking for the best candidates and I think firemen that have been trained, uh, qualified with the qualifications here can pick up the, the trucks, the, what the equipment is on the trucks with today's technology, they can find out where that call is, uh, in a matter of putting it up on a map, uh, technol- you know, different mapping programs. I think it's transparent this way and it doesn't create that good old boy club, that we hear every now and then as, as politicians. And, and we get the best candidates for the job. So, and then they may or may not be, uh, some of our, our own volunteers right now.
Mayor? Just could I interject real quick? We can open up externally. We will get in the neighborhood of three thousand applications.
Keep it busy.
Well, that's when you whittle it down, with the qualifications.
Huh?
That's when you whittle it down with the qualifications.
They will all be qualified.
Can be some work then.
Alright, other discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Pass is three to two. Alright, now we continue our fun journey of agenda hopping to item number C. Two, petition to reconstruct Market Street between Seventh and Eleventh.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This item, we did receive a petition from residents on Market Street between Seventh Avenue and Eleventh Avenue to have a street, their street reconstructed. And, um, the petition you have before you, see here, to wake this up. Falling asleep, here we go. There.
There we are.
Alright. Alright.
Costs are done. I won't have to worry anymore. December twenty-seventh, washing clothes. Sewer line backed up again. I got the company to come out to open it. They found out that the collector line in the street had collapsed. So I called up the company that did the line replacement for me. They said if I could wait until the ground thawed into the spring, it would save me thousands. So, my line went out January twenty-third, February twenty-third, March twenty-third. It, it was like a sitcom. And then it finally, instead of going out once a month, the last time it went out, March thirtieth. And I, as you can tell, I've got a little gray hair. This wasn't there before my sewer started acting up. And I said, okay, that's enough. And I went down to Public Works, talked to Jim Henderson, basically cried on his shoulder. And Jim gave me some options that he knew of. I made some phone calls, had my line replaced on April second, the collector line. And so far, as Bruce was saying, it's very expensive. So far, I've got over ten thousand stuck into this. I've still got my yard to fix, which was all tore up. I've got my sidewalks to replace, which were both tore up. And in talking to Bruce and Jim, I found out that I'm not the only one this affects. There's people, as Bruce was showing, are saying between Seventh and Eleventh, that their original line was Orangeburg. And Orangeburg was used from nineteen forty to nineteen seventy. And my line was put in in nineteen fifty-six. So, if you ever saw Orangeburg, you wonder how it got sixty years use. I mean, it's cardboard. And cardboard eventually will get wet, especially when water's running through it. And it's seven feet down in the ground. And once it starts to leak, a tree root's gonna find the leak. And that's the end of cardboard, Orangeburg. So I said, asked Bruce what could be done to prevent other people from having to go through what I went through. And he said about the only thing you can do is get a petition. And I said, okay, how do I do that? He gave me some examples and that's when I started walking up and down the street, talking to people, explaining what was going on. And in the process, I found properties, two properties on the south side of Tenth Street had the same problem. One woman spent over ten thousand bucks from her house to the curb. She didn't have the collector line replaced. Neighbor of hers across the street, same situation, Orangeburg, fifteen thousand. Different company, fifteen thousand bucks, service line replaced. And as I was getting ready for this meeting this morning, I looked out across the street from my house and my neighbor over there has got a snake going down his clean-out line, which I'm become very familiar with over the last few months. I walked over, asked him, Kenny, what's going on? He said, I've got water coming up all over the basement. He spent all day trying to get someone to come out and open up his line. When I came down here tonight, well, he finally got a company to come out, one that I had used frequently in the past few months. They sent the camera down, his lines collapsed, Orangeburg, again. So as I was coming down here tonight, he had a company from Prior Lake at his house giving, going to give him an estimate of what it's gonna cost to dig up his yard and replace his service line. And he's got a long, or a big lot. So it's gonna cost him, I hate to even guess, but it's gonna be more than mine. And talking to the people in the four-block area, a lot of these people are retired. They're living on very fixed incomes. I'm retired, my income's fixed too, but luckily I had enough money to pay for this. I can't go on vacation for five years, but what the heck?
Council Lamon?
I talked to these people and.
We got a question for you. Council Lamon?
Did you say you replaced part of the collector line?
Yeah, the collector line is the one that collapsed on December twenty-seven, or excuse me, March thirtieth. There was, oops, excuse me, there was a hole in the top about the size of a softball.
The collector line in the street?
Yep.
Well, it's the.
It's.
Service line from the main.
From the main to my service, yeah. Yeah.
But that's, that stubout is still between the middle of the street and the property line.
Yeah.
So that's really our system?
Pardon?
That's part of our system?
Well. Our, yeah, it's part of our system. We, we have a collector when he, when Mr. Schmidt is talking about a collector, he's really talking about his service line from, you know, all the lines from his house. There's one line that goes into our main. There's a main in the street and then there's service lines that come off of that from the main to the house. And our policy over the years has been that the property owner is responsible for the service line from the main to the house. So that, that's, that's a dilemma that Mr. Schmidt was in and others, uh, they have to repair that line.
So how different is this from other streets in the area? I mean, do we have half a dozen streets in this area that are having the same issue? Or is this an isolated incident or?
No, unfortunately, there's more. There's a couple on Third Avenue that are going on right now. Yeah, there's, the, the thing is, Orangeburg pipe was made during the World War II days and they made a lot of it. And they kept on making it because it was cheap. And it was used extensively, I can say even up to the seventies. So those people, if you're in there in the forty, and, and I have some pictures here, but it's basically, they say it, once it goes, there's no warning, it goes, it collapses. Yeah, and it's just, there are areas out there, that's where we're experiencing, that's why you're seeing we're replacing Atwood Street this year in Van Buren. There are areas that if we wait too long, um, there could be a big expense for a property owner. And that, we're trying to avoid that. We're looking at our five-year, but it's areas like this and Mr. Schmidt bringing to attention his neighbors, they say, yes, we do want to get this moved up.
Council Lamon?
Just to sum this up for everybody so we get on the same page, when they did Eighth Avenue in front of my house, the reconstruction project, they redid the, the sewer line, the water line, they tore up the whole road. And they stubbed out to each property up to the property line when they did the, the main in the street. So now from the property line to the house becomes your service line that the property owner is responsible for. Under his scenario, he's responsible currently from the house all the way out to the middle of the street where the main, where the main line is. Now if they, if we reconstruct the street, the property owners will only be responsible from their actual property line to the house because in the reconstruction project, under today's policy, we'll stub it out up to the property line as part of the project. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
It's a difference in the, yeah, it's a difference of timing. If we, if we do the project, we'll go right to the property lines, pay out the sewer fund.
And they get assessed for that whole project. Then they have to pay separately for the portion from the property line to the house.
Council Whiting?
This is not too unsimilar from the other projects we did. What is the assessment that these property owners can expect or average?
About four thousand.
Four grand? Unless they do their own line, dig up that and want to replace that, which is separate.
That's more than, yep.
Yeah, it's.
So if they want to do it, could be up to twenty grand to clean up from the house to, depending on the, you don't think it's that much?
No.
No.
That'd be another five maybe.
I mean, an average that we've seen.
Depends on the length of the lot.
Yeah.
Yeah. It, if you're talking about the rest of the, it's usually in the yard, so it's not that expensive, but. And depending on what the neighborhood would do, if they would get a group rate, you know, hire somebody who could do about five or six, maybe ten services at once, you can get a better rate. But that's something I know the people in Atwood are working on right now, so.
I would just add that, Mayor, I would add that the, this road is due for recon in not twenty fourteen, but twenty fifteen, I think it is.
Twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen?
Yeah, it wasn't in our five-year, but it was in the future beyond that, so.
Well.
We're just looking for council direction to consider this, again, just to accept the petition and look at us considering it for a twenty fourteen recon.
Well, I, I'll make that motion. I mean, if the residents are willing to pay for the reconstruction.
Yeah, could I just add one more thing?
Not, not yet. Hold on. Uh, so we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Council Sherman. Um, discussion, yes, sir?
Okay.
The only thing I wanted to say, counting today's neighbor's line that went out, roughly out of the forty-three properties that I've visited, some have frontage on like Seventh Street or Eighth Street and a side yard frontage on Market, so their lines don't run out to Market. I stopped there just because they would be responsible for any street assessment and just wanted to let them know that. But assuming that there's thirty-four properties out of the forty-three who have sewer lines running into Market Street, so far, five of those properties sewers have gone out in the last six months. I mean, we're talking over fifteen percent in a period of six months. So if we have to wait until twenty eighteen to get that street done, I'm fine. My sewer should be good until I'm about a hundred and twelve years old, so I'm not all that concerned.
Next month, twenty-third.
But there's going to be a lot, lot of problems if we have to wait five years.
Okay. Mr. Looney, my next question, so if, I understand we're just accepting the petition now, but what has to bump out and what other projects have to bump out if we move this one up?
Don't know yet. We have to analyze that.
I mean, is that?
That's something we're working on in the CIP and we bring back to you guys, you know, as part of the budget process.
And you think this is worthy of moving up in line?
Well, anytime you get a petition with enough residents signing it, I think you better pay attention to it.
Okay.
That's my, that's my advice. You can do what you want, but that's my advice. I think it's worthy of it, yes.
Okay, that's what I was asking. Any other discussion? Alright, we have a motion on the floor. Um, seeing another discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, sir, for all your hard work. Now we move on to nine, C three, adopt a revised street lighting policy. And I think that all was that Council Lamon just had one question on this, or else we would have put it on consent. So if you can just answer his question, Mr. Looney?
Okay.
My question was, I was reading this and if I'm reading it wrong, correct me, but are we now going to go to a assessment on existing neighborhoods that have existing lights that get replaced?
We've always had that in there. That's never changed. You're talking about if somebody petitions us and wants an additional street light?
No. No, I'm talking about if you come up to my neighborhood and take my streetlights out and put new streetlights in, I gotta pay for them now when they're already there?
No. No, I think what you read, the uh, if the property owners petition want an additional light that's not there, then they would be responsible for that cost of that light. Other than that, if we determine we need a light there or we're just replacing a light, no, there's no assessment.
Okay. Any other questions?
That's the one I had.
Got a motion for it then? Council Lamon?
Resolution seventy-three oh one. Move its adoption?
Second.
Second by Council Clay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Move on to, that's all of them now, right?
We gotta, we have a couple more.
Yeah, exactly. Oh, and there came the pictures.
Look at that.
Ooh, look at that.
Ooh, look at that.
Yeah, sewer pictures.
That camera footage?
Um... You don't get to talk about them now, Bruce.
That looks pretty heavy duty.
I was trying to get it to move over before, but that is Orangeburg. That's...
It's not even orange.
I know, I'm kind of disappointed in that.
Boy, it looks pretty thick, doesn't it?
It's pretty thick, but it's basically fibrous material with tumulus on it. There you go.
Thank you, sir. All right, item number ten, council member reports. We'll start on this side. Council Sherman.
On Wednesday, April twenty-fourth, I attended the Scott Communities Transit Review Board meeting where we had the MVTA as guests to present and answer questions around, um, the potential of the Blue Express and Prior Lake bus services joining that organization. Um, so it was a very good session, and I think, uh, what I got out of it, one of the bigger questions that I have was the financial piece of it. Um, and essentially, the way that it would work is we would enter into a joint powers agreement with the MVTA, and it's a, currently an equal seven-party, um, member organization where we would be an eighth, and it's one financial entity. So with that, we would shift our current funding to their larger pot, so to speak, and pool the funds. Um, because that, that was one of the major questions that I had about how that would work. And with the pooling of those funds, it would not mean that we would automatically then get our share that we're putting in. The body of the MVTA would make the decisions based on the full system as to how they would be funding the full system and service. With that, they, um, the discussion and the leaders that were there from the organization, I would say, um, very receptive to our ideas and our questions, very transparent in terms of answering them. And I saw that from a relationship standpoint and working together, that they're, um, an organization that I think that we could have a good working relationship. And we actually already do have a good working relationship with them in terms of coordination and sharing information, particularly in terms of, um, dealing with the Met Council, um, has been a common, uh, kind of quest amongst us. So, um, so that's, I mean, that's essentially what I took out of that MVTA meeting. Our next meeting, May twenty-ninth, will be, um, having the Southwest Transit come and do the same thing with us where we have questions and they'll do a presentation and kind of get those types of things answered for us. Yes.
Can we find out, would hypothetically, if we were going to opt into one of these other groups, would we be able to say, we'll opt in with our funding and, and realizing that they're going to make a decision as a body of how they spend that money, but to get a guaranteed minimum level of service for our area?
Yeah, we did talk about that, definitely. So, um, we would then be a decision-making part of that body and influencing those decisions. And we talked about the current level of service and where our desired level of service would be. And really, the MVTA, just because of their, you know, the seven parties that are part of it already, would actually very much likely enhance our levels of servicing, give our residents greater access to the metro area based on what they already offer. Um, so again, MVTA, coming out of the discussion, and this is very preliminary. I mean, we'd have to go a lot more in depth, but I'm comfortable proceeding with them from my perspective and having participated in that discussion. And then, like I said, we'll have the same discussion with Southwest and again, make that determination, are we comfortable proceeding with them? Um, does it make sense to go kind of more into the details and invest that time?
How's the relationship between, uh, MVTA and Southwest?
You know, I'm not sure what that relationship looks like.
MVTA and Southwest, they're...
They're pretty separate.
They're competitors, basically.
Different sides of the river as well.
Is there any way to get from one service to the other? I mean, do they accept each other at their locations at all?
It's a spoken wheel and pretty much, they go downtown. I don't, I think, uh, there's a desire, there's a plan to run something along American Avenue in Bloomington as an east-west. That would not be MVTA, but that would be Southwest and whether someone could connect through on Thirty-five W. I'd have to get information on that.
Metro Transit.
Is that Metro Transit?
To run the American Boulevard one.
Yeah, the B.
The guy had an option to get to both of them.
Bloomingtony Line.
I was just thinking of a guy, a rider had the option to get to both of them. Why, I suppose you couldn't get to both of them as a private citizen, you just drive to their...
Right. And actually, you know, um, there are probably a number of our residents that potentially drive to the Burnsville Transit Station already because Burnsville Station, that's an MVTA station, um, has a really, um, broad range of service in terms of time where one of the things that we talked about is, you know, as a bus rider, um, you don't want to be depending on taking that last bus. It's always, let's get the second to last one. Um, but with the service that goes to Burnville, Burnsville Station, it actually goes quite late. I think it's maybe until ten thirty PM even from some, there's some downtown runs that are that frequent. So, um, you know, we probably have some residents driving there to utilize that service already and...
As well as service to St. Paul.
Yeah.
Because Burnsville services St. Paul as well.
Yeah. So, just kind of a free, free cap of MVTA. But, um, certainly if you have any other questions about it, let me know, um, and I can help get those answers, so...
All right.
Thank you. Councilman Lehman.
There be days, um, a lot of electrical talk at every meeting. Hopefully, that's, uh, not too bad now. They're putting together some changes to some of their application processes to streamline and better define various applications online. You know, like a parade application or a vendor application, these types of things. So hopefully, that'll streamline their, their process a little bit. I did go to the governor's meeting in town here, forum, I guess it was called. Thought it was rude for the one individual to stand up and filibuster and talk all afternoon about things that really weren't specifically outlined on the governor's, uh, outlined by his staff of basically his, his proposed budget. It was, wasn't even nothing to do with the budget. So I thought that was kind of rude of that individual to talk so long and not take a hint twice from the governor to allow others to speak. At which point, the crowd defended the governor and politely asked the guy to sit down and let somebody else speak, as the governor pointed out. And that's all I have for report tonight.
Council Clay.
Utilities Commission has awarded the water main replacement part of our twenty thirteen street reconstruction project to Char Thiling, who also won the award last year. They were very pleased with their work then. I'm sure they will be pleased with their work this year as well. The, um, crews have started the process of flushing out the water mains. So if you see puddles in the street, don't worry, it's just flushing going on. The RAR fire, there, during the fire, they were pumping three thousand gallons per minute. About a million gallons per day on it after the initial fire suppression was done, although it's, I guess, still burning.
Hold on.
Is it finally done now? But so, but for a number of days, they were still cooling the, the tanks, um, the, the cost of the water for that process after the initial fire suppression is borne by the contractors, not the city, or Spuck on that. Water restrictions, now that it's finally spring, are, have started again. Just a reminder, you know, it's on the odd even systems, just like winter parking, there's no watering between twelve noon and five PM, regardless of what side of the street you're on, which has been a policy for a number of years now. Uh, and electric crews are going to be busy changing out, replacing about fifty, uh, poles. Other than that, the only other thing is that, uh, we did send a mutual aid flying crew down to Owatonna when, during this la, latest fourteen, fifteen inch wet, heavy snowfall.
I also saw that today, um, the city, I'm assuming Spuck was awarded one of three awards in the state from, from, it was from the governor's administration of, uh, for usage of water, um, for ideal use of water by a community. I just saw a little bit about it.
Saw that today?
Mm-hmm. It was just announced today.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, exactly. Councilwoman.
Well, thank you. Um, I've got my monologue here. Ten thirty, eleven o'clock, we should be out of here, but...
There you go.
Uh, Wednesday, uh, April seventeenth, was at the Shakopee Chamber and Visitors Board meeting. Uh, they had a report on their period, periodical magazine that promotes not only Shakopee tourism, but, uh, regional tourism. The booklet has an alluring layout style and utilizes cross-promotional ideas to promote and develop tourism. Uh, the board is looking at utilizing a member survey to acquire feedback from their members. I also want to mention, uh, Brian Turtle, uh, this Thursday night is putting on, uh, spearheading a fundraiser to assist the city in the downtown with the Flower Basket Project this year. Event will be held at the Social Club, Eighteen Ninety Social Club, uh, May ninth, six to nine PM, and will feature a dinner donated by Mr. Turtle in a silent auction. Tickets are thirty dollars and two for fifty dollars or a table of six for a hundred and fifty dollars. Thursday, April eighteenth, I attended the ribbon cutting at, uh, Sandmar Building. I think it's at Washington Partners or one of those fellows. Uh, their building is enormous and, uh, all told, I think with the second floor, I think it was three quarters of a million square feet, I believe. Um, Monday, April thirtieth, I attended the governor's town hall meeting and, uh, found it very informative. I want to thank the governor for having this forum in Shakopee, and I also want to take this opportunity to publicly apologize to the governor for the rather raucous meeting where the governor felt that those in attendance were being rude. I think this reflect, reflected poorly on Shakopee as a whole and sincerely hope any future meetings can be held with the proper decorum that is due an elected official at his level. Now, I think it was partly the way the, the meeting was organized and handled, but I do want to make that apology.
I think it was just Republicans bussed in from out of town.
Well, some of that too. Last Friday, uh, the Scale Executive Committee was held, uh, this month, they held it at the Scale Regional Training Facility, the old Mudbatten facility near Jordan, uh, Mudbatten. The Fri, this Friday's meeting will consist of a report on economic development and trends in real estate, uh, first-stop shop update, the education workshop overview, and a legislative update. There was also much discussion regarding the Met Council's Thrive Twenty Forty Roundtable discussions. Scale members are encouraged to attend one of the upcoming meetings, but hopefully, we can, uh, get a good turnout at the May thirtieth meeting out at the, um, RTF out there. The other meetings are being put on by Metro Cities, May twenty-ninth and June fourth. Uh, specific concerns focused for Scale are, uh, the One Sixty-nine Corridor, Thirty-five W Bridge, Highway Forty-one Bridge improvements, including the Right-Away Acquisition and finishing the environmental impact statement. Uh, and Met Council authority on housing and water, along with regional transit. Scale also supports the Met Council's redistricting plan twenty thirteen dash four, which may be done already, I don't know. Um, this past Saturday, I was, uh, also able to visit the organic waste facility since the first good day to clean up my yard was our city waste day, our cleanup day. So I missed that opportunity. So, uh, I will tell you that, um, it's free to Shakopee residents during, uh, April and May, and I also believe, uh, it's, uh, October and November going to be free.
September and October.
September and October will be free to Shakopee residents. Uh, the facility was very well-run and clean, and, uh, I even brought my leaves in bags. They made me cut them out of the plastic bags and take them home, but, uh, um, it was another opportunity to get rid of the yard waste rather than putting it in the, into the trash or burning it or something else. But it is free to Shakopee residents, uh, for the rest of this month. Um, and yesterday, on my garbage cart, I noticed, uh, received, uh, that they're changing the, from the street pickup to the alley pickup, and I'm pretty sure that it's not, uh, April thirteenth that they're changing mine, but it's probably going to be May thirteenth that they're going to be changing it, so, uh...
Back to the alley.
Back to the alley, but, uh, but not April. It'll be May, I'm pretty sure. So, that's all I have. And, uh, do want to bring up, uh, the rental ordinance again. I think that's something that we need to look at at this future because of some of the incidents that have happened in the past.
Councilman.
I need to ask Councilor Clay or liaison to Spuck to send back a note of kudos to the Utilities Commission members when they did the polls on First Avenue and the alley on the south side and shut down a bunch of the businesses in there. They came in first, told us what they wanted to do, asked what the time is that we can give up forty-five minutes or so, which is nice because without the air compressor, the waste comes down, unless it's on a lock, I agree. Um, so they, they did a great job. They, they got everything ready to go. They came in, you know, two days before. They said, what works best for you? And I said, how about like nine? I can get them up in the air on the locks and stuff, and then I can work on them while you guys are doing your stuff. And, uh, that's, that's exactly what happened. It was like clockwork. It was unbelievable. Half hour, forty minutes, boom, boom. Didn't even know. Came back in and said, turn everything on, we're done.
Pass that along.
So they, he did a good job of coordinating that. I was really impressed.
Nice. All right, I've got a couple of things, uh, along with Councilwoman. Was at the ribbon cutting for Sandmar, and that evening went to the, uh, real estate, uh, awards banquet where they did not win, um, which was a bummer, but it was, uh, a very interesting night in all the snow that was on the eighteenth. Um, the nineteenth, they spent, uh, the day at, um, St. Anthony Main in Minneapolis with Greater MSP at a, uh, workshop to talk about the future of the metro as to where we put, um, uh, efficiencies and where we put, uh, our time into for building economic development and other, uh, things for the metro. And the follow-up with that is next month, um, on the twenty-third, with Metro Legislative Committee, had a meeting with the governor and with some other mayors at nine-thirty in the morning where we talked about just different issues from economic development. Um, other things are in his budget. Um, and that was a very good meeting at that point. Um, twenty-fifth, in honor of, uh, April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, went to a, a vigil in Chaska for the Carver Scott, um, well, I'm going to mess up their name now.
Southern Valley Alliance?
No, it wasn't Southern Va, no, it wasn't that one. Um, Scott and Carver Sexual Assault Awareness, we'll call it that for now. I'll figure out what the better name is, um, with that. But it was very good. Um, got to talk to a lot of people and it was nice. Then that weekend, the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, um, was in Morehead for the Minnesota Mayor's Conference, um, and got to meet a lot of people and learn a lot there. Um, then on the second, I went to Sweeney and talked at ten-thirty in the morning, and we talked about, uh, government and how kids can get involved in things. And then last night was, uh, Heading Home. Um, there was a meeting, an organizing meeting. Um, it's Heading Home is a organization to help end homelessness in Scott and Carver Counties. It's a coalition between the two counties and it's all, it's not a county-run thing. It's all volunteers, um, and people working to, uh, get more housing and help people find solutions so they don't become homeless and have stability in their housing. So it was a, uh, very good meeting, and they're doing great work. And there'll be opportunities in the next, uh, year or so for, um, Shakopee to help partner, um, with ways that we can help, uh, end homelessness in our area. So it was a very good meeting. Uh, item number eleven, any other business? None. Entertaining a, uh, motion to adjourn to Tuesday, May fourteenth, twenty thirteen. Councilman Lehman.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, you got, I'm giving you about ten seconds.
That's all I need, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I forgot to mention when I was up here. I want to really thank Jim Henderson from Public Works, Bruce Looney from Public Works, and Councilman Clay, who took the time while he was out for dinner with his wife at a local restaurant to come over and sit with me and talk to me about my sewer line. So I just want to let the city know that they do good work. Thank you.
His wife was probably happy to get rid of him, so you know that. So, Councilman Lehman.
Motion to adjourn to Tuesday, May fourteenth.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Clay. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that...
Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are adjourned. Anyone opposed? We are adjourned.